Thank you. I will call this regular meeting of the San Marcos City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, September 5th of 2023. Time is 6:00 PM. Mr. Vino, please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Prather.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Gleason.
Here.
Mayor Houston.
Here.
Ms. Garza. Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
And Mr. Mendoza. We have a court present.
All right, our invocation this evening will be given by Guy Henninger, pastor of Grace Bible Church. Welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity to pray over this council meeting tonight. I am at Grace Bible Church up on the northwest side, as you mentioned. Let's pray. Almighty God, we come before you, the Creator of heaven and earth, with gratitude and humble hearts. It is you, O Lord, in your sovereign wisdom and purpose who has given us this idea, this concept of civil government, to be implemented at the various levels of government across our land, federal, state, local, to govern over the affairs of the citizens, the people of this land. And so it is we lift up to you tonight, this council meeting, and we ask your blessing upon these proceedings. Grant wisdom and discernment to the mayor and council members as they address the items on tonight's agenda. Give each of them a clear, complete understanding of the many issues that will be addressed. Provide clarity of thought to each of them when expressing their respective viewpoints. Give them courage to stand firm when conscience dictates, and yet provide an honest willingness to each of them to also work together for solutions. Bless them with respect and honor towards one another during these deliberations, and may Father, they be unified in their desire to effectively address not only the immediate needs at hand of our city, but also to implement policies, initiatives, for the long term that will ensure San Marcos remains a great city for all of us to call home. Father, we know this council cannot govern without the support of its citizens, so we ask that the people of San Marcos would be mindful of their civic duties, that they would make their voices heard, but then also willingly engage whenever and wherever support or action is needed. Father, the issues facing this city, this council, are varied. They're complex and often in competition with one another for the limited resources that must be prioritized. And so, Father, we ask you to guide this council with insight, equip them in every possible way to carry out the duties of their elected positions. May you bless them, that the work that they do would in turn bless all of us. We humbly ask these things in thy son's name. Amen. Thank you again.
Thank you. And next is our pledges of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Next on our agenda is our citizen comment time period, and we welcome speakers at work sessions and our regular meetings. If you wish to speak during citizen comment or question and answer of a regular meeting, we do have an online sign up, or you may sign up at the city clerk's office. The deadline is 5:45 PM, the day of the meeting. To speak online, you will need to sign up online in order to get your call-in number or link. You may speak once during citizen comment time period and may not yield time to others. If you speak about a public hearing topic, we ask that you not repeat the exact same comments again during the public hearing on the same topic. You will have three minutes to speak when you state your name. A timer is displayed on the screen. You'll start in the green, and when you have 20 seconds left, you will be in the yellow. When the timer is red, your time to speak is up, and you will hear a bell that's generated from the software. The mayor and council will endeavor to ensure that meetings are conducted in a courteous manner and in an atmosphere free of defamation, intimidation, personal insults, profanity, or threats of violence. And I ask that you have patience with me as I try to... I'll do my best to pronounce some names. And if I say it wrong, we'll be asking you to repeat your name when you start your comments, so if you will state it correctly. Our first speaker this evening is Bucky Couch, who is in chambers.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Bucky Couch, 2629 Summit Ridge. Given the people, the number of people here tonight, you'd think it was not much of an agenda, but it is. It's a full agenda, and that's why I've come here to speak on a couple of points. First is item number two on your consent agenda regarding the interlocal agreement with the San Marcos ISD concerning the school resource officer program. As a member of Chief Standwich's advisory panel, I speak on behalf of the group and offer our unanimous support for continuation of this program. I've read the agreement between the city and the school district, and I applaud both parties for working together for the safety and wellness of the students and faculty. And I know a couple of years ago, this drug on several months, so I'm glad to see that both the school district and staff and council have added in some language that was requested from a couple of years ago, and it looks like it's, I know the school board unanimously approved it, so I just ask for your approval tonight. Second, this pertains to item 13 of the public hearings presentation. The 2024 budget includes additional funding for the police and fire departments. It's nice to see that you all have allocated funds that are in line with the strategic goals that you set back in January. Even though this budget falls short of funding needed to catch up with the city's growth, it's a welcome step. And as a business owner, a parent, a grandparent, and a taxpayer, thank you for your leadership in elevating public safety as a core purpose of city government. And thank you, City Manager Reyes and Assistant Manager staff, for your leadership and guidance. And in honor of the parrot head, it's 5:00 somewhere, and I'm out of here.
Tamia, is it?
Jack.
Jack, okay, thank you.
Hello, I'm Tamia Jacques, and I am, I'm from this community. I've been here for 20 years, approximately 20 years. And I'm a wife and mother to six children. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and your service to this community. I have a few questions. The first question, I want to know if it is equitable and just to raise taxes and service rates and spend money on non-essentials like beautification, compensation studies, consultants, and non-essential projects, pay raises, in a time when food and housing costs have gone up to the point where residents, families, are struggling to pay for essentials. Texans are struggling to pay property taxes right now, and the state is acknowledging that and is talking about giving relief. Why are we raising rates? Our San Marcos community is concerned and is wondering if there is a push for gentrification. If that is so, that is concerning. And then also, about the revenue from Amazon coming here and revenue from the huge, all the developments that have come in, why are we having to raise rates or taxes at a time when we've had all this new revenue stream? So that's a question. Next question is about the city doing something about the water issues, the San Marcos River, Edward Aquifer, Trinity Aquifer. Wells are drying up. The river, the aquifer, is the lowest in recorded history. San Marcos is on the recharge zone. Why are we welcoming new development over the recharge zone? Why are zoning laws allowing for more and more apartments over the recharge zone? Also, I must mention... No, that's about it. Okay, thank you. I appreciate y'all's service and allowing me to speak.
Our next speaker is Virginia Parker.
Hello, mayor and council members. I'm Virginia Parker with the San Marcos River Foundation. I wanted to talk to y'all a little bit about some issues at the city's riverside park system this past summer. I think we all know it was pretty crazy out there, especially with the low river levels. We see a real need for more financial resources and staff support at both the Parks Department and the City Marshals Department. We had so many complaints this summer about the amount of trash in and around the river, rules banning glass and styrofoam not being followed, the river being blocked off in places from large groups of tubers being tied together, and around safety issues that arise from these groups, concern for the trampled Texas wild rice, and more. We have been talking to various groups to brainstorm about ways to support the parks and the Marshals Department. We will bring concrete suggestions to both you, the council, and the Parks Board, but off the bat, it's become glaringly obvious that neither department has enough staff, which we know will take funding and planning. It's for this reason that we completely support paid parking all along the River Parks corridor, knowing that residents, and this is important, that residents have free passes. That way, they can enjoy the River Parks in the summer. We feel that's hugely important. We also want to point out that while walking through our parks after this incredibly busy season, some of the only vegetated areas along the river are those behind the Habitat Conservation Plant, HCP fencing, which protect the vegetation that's critical to keep our river crystal clear, which is why so many people come to this town every summer and all year long, honestly. On your agenda tonight, you'll discuss item number four on the consent agenda, to approve an agreement with HJR Media to create a campaign project to promote tourism at the annual cost of more than $146,000. We understand that there is a need for tourism in San Marcos for business and restaurants. However, I think we can all agree that the San Marcos River and the River Park System are both very well-known throughout Texas, especially since we have one of the last free River Park Systems in Texas. Until the city finds a way to manage the thousands upon thousands of daily visitors to the San Marcos River, we feel any money spent on advertising the river is a flawed use of funds, unless, of course, it is to talk about park rules, safety issues, endangered species, and more. It's possible that before the city invests more money in the marketing of the river, the city should put those funds into an improved plan for supporting the marshals and the litter control. The natural areas really need more recreation management support in sync with city marketing. This is not a dig on city staff or Parks Department or Keep San Marcos Beautiful. I think they're doing a great job with what they have. Thank y'all for your time.
Our next speaker is Lisa Marie Capoletta, who joins us online.
Good evening. My name is Professor Lisa Marie Capoletta. They call me LMC. What happened to your own personal bill? Therefore, he commanded, "And the same day of the overseers of the works and the taskmasters of the people saying, 'You shall give straw no more to the people to make brick, as before, but let them go and gather straw.' And you shall lay upon them the tasks of the bricks, which they did before, but neither shall you diminish anything thereof, for they are idle. And therefore, they cry, saying, 'Let us go and sacrifice to our God.'" This is from Exodus 5, 6 through 8. And while we may not be living under the time period of Pharaoh, we certainly do find ourselves, as taxpayers, in a similar predicament with the current economy. This year's current cost of living amounted to an 8.7% bump for social security benefits as well as supplemental security income benefits, the biggest increase since 1981, when the inflation adjustment was 11.2%. We have a very wasteful city management up at City Hall. For example, a lot of the people in the community call them the fat boys, the gordos. Those are those big, original delineators that cost $38,000 on Hunter Road, totaling to $300 per delineator. And just we had a developer and a couple of his homies drop a dime, and suddenly now we have the flacos, the skinny boys up. Then we spent $500,000 on a master plan that was repeatedly set back. Now I want to read you a little bit more from history. One Captain O'Connor, whom I knew well, came on board for the purpose when he supposed, when he thought he was unnoticed, filled his pockets and also the lining of his coat. But I detected him and gave information to the captain of what he was doing. And we were ordered to take him into custody just as he was stepping from the vessel. I seized him by the coat. He had to run a gauntlet through the crowd upon the wharf nine, each one as he passed, giving him a kick or a stroke. The next morning after we cleared the ships of the tea, it was discovered that the very considerable quantities of it were floating upon the surface of the water and went to prevent any possibility of its being saved for use by a number of small boats that were manned by sailors and citizens, who rowed them into the parts of the harbor whenever the tea was visible by beating it with oars and paddles so thoroughly drenched as to render it an entire destruction inevitable. This is an account of George Hayes, a Boston shoemaker, a member of the Sons of Liberty, and a participant of the Boston Tea Party. In his account, as he reveals and recalls the events of December 16th, 1773. I feel we are now at a point in American society, both at the local level and the national level, where the citizens are taxed beyond representation, and you, as the elected officials, are the last line of the city. And the title of the rest of my talks tonight, which I will weave a thread, is "Bougie Entitlement and Equity Virtual Signaling." Thank you for your time, and God bless San Marcos.
Our next speaker is Rob Rourke.
Good evening, council and mayor and... City manager and city staff. Thank you very much for the time this evening. My name is Rob Rourke, 2805 Hunter Road. I'm going to give you some bullet points, because why? That's what we've had for the budget for the past, oh, about four or five weeks, that it's been up there. We don't have any details. All the details just came out for the public here in the last week or so, about, if we want to dive down into anything. Transparency, folks, we've got two weeks now to pour through. This is the first hearing tonight. As Mr. Couch said earlier, I am surprised that there are not many more people here, considering the weight of what we have. This is probably one of the hardest budgets that any of y'all have had to have for many years, and I'm aware of that. The city is running out of money. We're not getting all of this growth that we had planned on, changes in the way that we get the money. You all have a tough job, but that's what you are elected to do. It is called the budget. It is very simple. We have income, less the expenses. That is our savings that goes to the future. That is the same for any one of us here in this building. That is the same for any one of you, for your house. One of those expenses is taxes, along with food, along with everything else. Housing is going up. Why? Because San Marcos is running people off because of our tax rates. The county, the city, you know, the school district, excuse me. All of these come together. You are just one part of the equation. But this is your equation. This is the budget. This is what you are elected to do. This is the most important thing. That is why I am here tonight. One of the key things that I noticed was that we have got a problem for our future. We are looking at problems for... We get all of these grants. We get all of these projects. But guess what? We talked about the gordos, the green that Ms. Capoletta just talked about. We put those into place, then we traded them out. Where could that money have gone? We do this quite regularly, and we've got a problem. If you go into the budget and presentations, and you see we talk about the CIP, and that we've got to change that. The city is admitting that. What I'm asking you tonight is that we come up with a plan, that we come back to us, we, the people, every couple of months here, and we talk about where we are at with the future, that we are putting the money into place to go out and to clean the weeds off over here at Highway 80, so when people come in at I-35 and 80, and it doesn't look a mess. We don't have the money for it. We don't have the resources. We need to put that into place. We need to answer to the people. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Our next speaker is Lelou Jacques. Not here, okay. And next is P.E.K.K.A.Rintala. I'm sorry, I couldn't pronounce that.
Pekka Rintala.
Thank you.
733 Oscar Smith Street. And some issues that I was going to bring up, they were already discussed. I was concerned about the wasteful spending of the tax dollars, and one of them was the bike lanes. And they were built, I don't know why. I see maybe five bicycles on them in a couple of years. And not only that, but they were taken down and now rebuilt. And I'm curious how much money was wasted on that and also including the street sweeper that was purchased to fit that small lane that is there. So that was a first issue. But then also, the electric taxi I've seen around town, and also, I'd like to see how much that costs, because I've been just, I've seen it, been driving around, and I don't know what is the purpose of it. Can I order the taxi to my home, and it'll take me somewhere? I don't think so, or I don't know. And also, I had an issue about the old Ranch Row 12 leading on to Oscar Smith Street and Blanco. That's where I live, and a lot of traffic comes through there, and they drive in town pretty fast. And we have a lot of accidents in that corner. That guardrail has been replaced, I think, three times since we moved there five years ago. And quite often, I hear crashes in the middle of the night. I have my cellphone on my flashlight, and I'm the first one in the scene usually calling the 911. There was one death there a couple of years ago, and a lot of accidents happen there all the time. Something should be done, maybe rumble strips or speed pumps, or I don't know what else, other ideas, but something should be done. That's a very dangerous intersection, and it keeps happening. So something should be done about that. And also, the scooters. I didn't think that we're supposed to have scooters in San Marcos. And I keep calling the spin, because the kids, they use the scooters, and then they leave in front of our house, and they are nuisance, really, all over the city. So I don't know why they are in town. I didn't think they should be here. And lastly, the property taxes. That was brought up already a few times, but I'm concerned if we can sustain. We have two houses in San Marcos, and if the property taxes keep going up, as they did in Austin, people of San Marcos will be driven out, some of them. I think that is all. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Robert Eby.
Hello, thank you for having me tonight. Robert Eby, 1007 Dale Drive. I do want to speak on the tax issue, although I will say I'm a fan of many of the services the city provides. I don't have any complaints about city services. In fact, I have some ideas to expand city services, but the budget, what it is, as it's proposed, I actually have a proposal for you for the tax rate. I feel like you can reduce the taxes to .6000 or 60 cents flat, which actually is a tax rate reduction for everyone who's pressured with higher taxes due to increasing home values. We're not proposing a tax increase. The tax rate is actually steady, but the tax rate is going up because of home values. But you have an opportunity to actually lower the tax rate. Marginally, it's only, you know, $200,000, $300,000, $400,000 out of the city budget. You have a good margin, a good cushion. It would not hinder any city services. It wouldn't change your proposed budget, is what I'm saying. Yet you have an opportunity to reduce taxes. Good for the residents. It looks good for you, city council, because you can say you passed a tax rate decrease. I think it's a great idea. Now, you'd have to fit it into the budget, but I wish you would consider... It's very minute. It's only .003 cents or something like that. But I think it's something you should consider. It would be a tax rate decrease, and it wouldn't change the city budget. I've seen the, you know, the city taxi downtown. Today, I passed by, and it was absolutely full. I think it's great, alternative mobility, getting cars off the street is great for air quality. It's great for human health. But the bike lanes, I'm a big favorite, fan of the bike lanes for the taxi, anything that keeps cars off the street. So I'm a fan of the things, the direction the city is moving. I do want to encourage you to preserve the river, preserve the aquifer. But I think San Marcos is moving in the right direction. But I think you have an opportunity with this tax rate to actually lower taxes and still meet the city services you're providing at your proposed budget. And I hope in future budgets, you consider more benefits residents can gain. Thank you.
Okay, and our last speaker is Sarah Teal.
Hello, Sarah Teal, 1112 Sycamore. Last week, my family tried to access two different publicly funded art programs from the city for our 14-year-old and were denied admittance based solely on his chronological age. There were no questions about whether he had the skills or maturity to participate, simply a hard no to anyone under the age of 18. I had always subtly sensed that there was a lack of spaces for teenagers in the city, and there was a lack of places where all ages got together. But it really did not come into my full awareness until the combination of these incidents occurred, and then I could not stop seeing it. I watched something recently regarding the issue that said that age-based discrimination is functionally invisible, suggesting that we, as a society, are not able to comprehend that young people's rights are being violated because we have normalized that practice in our society. The functional invisibility explains why many beloved institutions at the city level, like the library and the Parks and Recreation System, haven't been called out for not applying their own published policies for eliminating that kind of discrimination. Luckily, in the foggy haze that functional invisibility creates, there are still programs like Title VI through the federal government and recommendations like the Library Bill of Rights that have been put in place to protect those people in our society and help guarantee equal access to programs funded with public dollars. There are also beacons of hope that I have found, adopting best practices for age inclusion, like the Austin Public Library, who religiously follows the Library Bill of Rights, and the Price Center and the Discovery Center here in San Marcos, who appear committed to offering age-inclusive activities. I have been and will continue to make reports to the systems that are currently in place to protect the rights of young people in our community. I will continue to push for places like the San Marcos Public Library that already have nondiscrimination policies set in place for age-related issues to enforce those policies in their programs. I hope that you, as a council, are able to see through the fog of functional invisibility to make sure and uphold the policies currently in place that protect human rights for everyone in our city. Thank you.
Mr. Vino, did we have anyone else? All right. So that concludes the citizen comment portion of our program, and we are now to the consent agenda. The following ordinances, resolutions, and other items, numbered 1 through 8, may be acted upon by one motion. No separate discussion or action is necessary unless desired by a council member, in which case, we will, we pull that from the consent agenda, and we will address consent agendas separately. And then the items that are pulled, we will do after the public hearings. I'm pulling item 6 for a minor amendment. Do y'all have anything else? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve 1 through 5, 7, and 8.
Mayor, I'll make that motion to approve items one through eight with the admission of number six.
All right. Looking for a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Scott.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
And Mr. Prater.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right. So next, we will go to our public hearings.
Receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance 2023-57, annexing into the city approximately 1.8 acres of land in Hayes County, generally located east of the intersection between Love Lady Lane and State Highway 123, case number AN-23-09, including procedural provisions and provide an effective date and consider approval of ordinance 2023-53 on the first of two readings.
Okay. Ms. Hernandez.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. We briefly discussed this item at your August fifteenth meeting, and it's for the annexation of a portion of right-of-way along the proposed Sedona North development. Through the plating process, the developer was required to dedicate more right-of-way than they had initially proposed. And to ensure that maintenance responsibilities are clear, we are bringing this area into the city limits. Next slide. There is no associated zoning change, since the use of the property will be right-of-way. The land is surrounded by the Character District Three, or CD Three-zoned Sedona North development, and vacant land in the ETJ. Hayden, if you could skip ahead two slides. Today, we are holding the required public hearing for the annexation, and staff is recommending approval of the request as presented. And that concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you. And I will now open the public hearing on item nine. And we have, our first speaker would be Tamia Jacques. Next would be Lisa Marie Capoletta, who joins us online.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Professor Lisa Marie Capoletta. They call me LMC. I would kindly ask the mayor to move up all of the public hearings that impact the other citizens, not these developer-related. I believe there's probably citizens in the audience who would like to speak about issues that affect them versus giving privilege to developers. And I take issue with city staff or whoever is responsible for creating that agenda and placing developers above the taxpayers when we stage the agenda. That is very telling, and it's very unfortunate that people have to sit around and wait and listen to me talk and listen to Amanda talk when they probably have kids at home that they need to take care of. The other thing is, we don't know, now to the public hearing proper, my address is 1322 Belvin, by the way, if I didn't state it.
Mr. Mendoza.
Mr. Prater.
We don't know what the land use is, and maybe this came up, and maybe we need clarification.
Aye.
And Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes five to zero with two absent.
Okay.
And it seems like the city annexes a lot of land.
Council checking with you to see if you want to rearrange the public hearing order.
And even people, I've supported in the past, tend to vote for these.
To bring the budget.
And I'm perplexed why we seem to be in such a struggle and a bind all the time with all
Budget and tax rate, and the rate changes. One, two.
this annexation, for purposes of the citizens who are waiting patiently, who have been
Two.
Okay. So we will move up to item thirteen.
pushed down at the bottom of the barrel of the agenda. I will now conclude my comments.
Receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against
Thank you for your time, and God bless San Marcos.
Our next speaker, who has signed up, is Lelous Jacques.
ordinance 2023-61, adopting an operating budget in the amount of $321,150,452 for the fiscal
Is there anyone else in chambers lobby for your wishing to speak on this item?
year beginning October 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2024, authorizing certain adjustments to the budget with the approval of the city manager, adopting a fee schedule and approving
Anyone? Okay. I will close the public hearing and await a motion from council on item nine.
fiscal year 2023-2024 capital improvements program projects in the amount of $77,33,000, including procedural provisions and provide an effective date, and consider approval
Motion to approve. Motion to approve by Mr. Scott.
of ordinance 2023-61 on the first of two readings.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Gleason. Okay. And before we go any further, I need to read some stuff for legal reasons. And questions, comments? Did I close the public hearing? State law requires that the city hold a public hearing on the city's budget. Thank you. Okay. We'll vote. This agenda item is the first public hearing for the city's fiscal year beginning October
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
1 of 2023 and ending on September 30 of 2024.
Ms. Garza.
Mr. Gonzalez.
There will be a second public hearing on September 19. The public is invited to make comments for or against items in the budget. The budget has been on file in the city clerk's office and on the city's website since August 15. Notice of this public hearing was published in a local newspaper on August 23 of 2023. After receiving public comments, the city council will consider the budget ordinance on first reading. The city council will actually consider adoption of the budget on the second reading of the budget ordinance at the city council meeting scheduled for September 19. And now our presentation. Ms. Reyes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As council considers first reading of the fiscal year 2024 budget, I'd like to reflect on our journey to this point. In January, council held your annual visioning workshop to lay out your strategic goals for the next few years. We held a budget policy workshop in February to talk about how to implement these goals for the upcoming budget year. That is when council provided your direction on how we should build this proposed budget. We have tried to keep council and the public apprised of the budget throughout the process with three additional budget workshops held in May, bless you, June, and most recently on August 15, where we presented the proposed budget. I am also proud of the steps we've made to make the process more transparent. For the first time, our finance director presented the budget to the Neighborhood Commission ahead of tonight's public hearings, and that was on August 16. Our communications team, in conjunction with the Finance Department, posted our first-ever series of videos to better inform the public about how the budget ties to the strategic plan. In addition, agendas are also being translated to Spanish to make them more accessible to more of our population. Utility rates were taken to the Citizens Utility Advisory Board, which is appointed by the city council, who unanimously recommended rate increases for electric, water, wastewater, based on seeing the financials it takes to run those utilities. We understand and share the community's desire to keep our tax rate as low as possible while enhancing core services. Although the tax rate is staying the same as last year, it is one cent less than the amount authorized by voters in the 2017 bond election. The proposed rate of 60.30 covers our operations, which includes core services, strategic goals, employee salaries, and special programs. A portion of the rate also goes toward debt, so we can continue to complete public infrastructure projects. Due to the continued growth in our community and the increasing cost of doing business, we're unable to lower the rate further if we want to make progress in areas where we are behind. We have been intentional about prioritizing resources for pressing needs while not increasing above the current tax rate. The FY24 budget focuses on core services, which includes ongoing support of our employees as they are an essential part of providing those services. It's important to say at this point that city employees are paid based on market rates, and that the rates that we're looking at are rates that are not different than what other communities are paying for similar positions. Additionally, we're working to address public safety, and I'm proud to say we're making progress. With your support, we have added multiple public safety positions over the last two years. We also have a plan going forward to increase the number of police and fire personnel to meet the needs that have not been given as high of a priority in past budgets. In addition to the sworn personnel, we're proposing to fund an additional eleven positions in the General Fund to meet other identified needs within our community and the organization. Our financial situation remains challenging, as we heard during the public comment period. We continue to be one of the fastest-growing communities in the nation, and additional resources are necessary to meet those growing needs. As citizens are seeing their budgets increase, it's also increasing the need for us to provide those services to our community. As we continue to expand, we must invest in our future and consider revenue sources such as service or user fees, which we heard about again during the public comment period in regard to paid parking. This will help us to provide capacity for us to address specific areas without taxing residents out of their homes. We are optimistic in the strides the state legislature took this past year to reduce school taxes and are hopeful that the measure will pass in November, so citizens will see a reduction in their overall tax bill. City council has also mitigated the rise in property values by implementing a $15,000 homestead exemption and increasing the exemptions for seniors and people with disabilities from $25,000 to $35,000. Last year, 2022, was the first year homeowners saw the savings of the homestead exemption on their tax bills. Before I turn it over, I would like to thank everyone who's played a role in this process. That includes the citizens who participated in the public process and have provided feedback, the Citizens Utility Advisory Board, the Neighborhood Commission, Communications Department, and all the directors, staff, council throughout the organization who've helped form this budget. In particular, I want to recognize Finance Director John Locke, as well as finance staff for their countless hours spent analyzing and compiling data to get us to today. I'd also, again, like to thank the city council for your direction throughout this process. We recognize these decisions are not easy, and we appreciate your willingness to discuss how we can best address the needs of our community. And the gentleman who did the invocation at the beginning, I wanted to say yes what he said, because it's very challenging. These are complex, you know, situations, complex decisions that everybody's having to work through, and they don't always agree with one another. There are a lot of competing interests, and it takes a lot to try to see how we can come up with a budget that has something for everyone, and that speaks to the interests of everyone. But I know that it's not going to make everyone happy. And for that, we wish that there was a different outcome. But that's the budget we have before you tonight. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Locke, so he can provide more information.
Mr. Locke.
Ms. Reyes, thank you, Mayor and State Council. We'll begin with the budget calendar. Next slide, please. Begin with the budget calendar to just go through all of the steps that have gotten us here this evening. As Ms. Reyes pointed out, in January, we had the city council strategic planning and visiting session. Following that, we had the budget policy workshop, where city council provided the parameters that staff used in building the fiscal year 24 budget. And that budget policy was adopted in March. After the budget policy adoption, there have been three budget workshops. And as Ms. Reyes pointed out as well, the budget was presented to the Neighborhood Commission on August 16. There was a budget workshop number four that was set aside in the event that it was needed, if further discussion was needed on some of the items that were presented in the budget delivery on August 15, and that wasn't needed at the time. So that brings us to this evening on September 5, where we'll have public hearings on the budget and the tax rate. And next week, we'll also have a public hearing on the budget and the tax rate. Next slide, please.
Next week, next meeting.
I'm, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, the next meeting, which would be September 19.
Two weeks.
Yes, in two weeks.
Thank you.
This slide just provides an overview of the fiscal year 24 budget. In total, the revenues budgeted are $315 million, and expenses $321 million. And we're estimated citywide to end with a fund balance of $91 million. The largest operating fund is the General Fund, and it is displayed first. The total revenues in the General Fund is $111 million, with expenses being $114 million. So there is some planned use of fund balance for some one-time expenses. And then the next couple of slides will provide some highlights on what's included in the One of the items that the budget policy required was that the tax rate have a goal of not increasing above the current tax rate for fiscal year 23, which is at 60.3 cents. And the tax rate as, in the budget as submitted, is to keep the tax rate the same at the 60.3 cents. The staffing was increased to support those core services, and as well as city council's strategic goals. In total, there are 29 positions citywide that are included in this proposed budget. Nineteen of those are in the General Fund. Of those, eight are police and fire positions. There are five positions that are in special revenue funds, that's hotel tax and Women, Infants, and Children Fund. We have one that is in stormwater, one in electric, and three in water wastewater. One of the biggest drivers in the city's budget is our employees. It takes people to provide services. And we are expecting the results of the market-based classification and compensation study. Anytime, that study is being finalized right now. Included in the budget is $4.4 million to implement the results of that compensation study. That $4.4 million is citywide, so that's, you know, across all 900-plus employees of the city. There's also some historical restoration and preservation funding included in the budget. Per the city council's direction at the last meeting with the Family Justice Center closing operations, the $45,000 that was set aside, that was going to be given to the Family Justice Center, was added to the total amount that was included to go towards historical restoration and preservation. That brings the total in the fiscal year 24 budget to $195,000, with $145,000 of that being in general funds, and $50,000 being from hotel tax. There's also the Human Services Advisory Board. City council increased funding from $500,000 to $650,000. $50,000 of that was additional funding from the General Fund, and $100,000 of that was from the American Rescue Plan Act funding. This item will come back to city council, probably in the December timeframe. What the budget does is it establishes the ceiling for the amount that will be allocated by the Human Services Advisory Board. That board will make a recommendation to city council that'll come back for city council's consideration in December on the actual amounts to allocate out to the different applications. Next slide, please. Included in the 24 budget is to set aside an additional $2.8 million for the new city hall. This is actually the fund balance that's in excess of the 25% requirement in the General Fund for fiscal year 22, and is being proposed to be moved during the fiscal year 24 budget. There is a total of $5.8 million in capital outlay, citywide included, in the budget. The capital improvement program for fiscal year 24, that's the first year of that ten-year program, is $77 million across all the different funds. There's $188,000 for signature events. Those events include the Summer in the Park, the Sacred Springs Powwow, sights and sounds of Christmas, Mermaid Promenade, and Fair. There is $60,000 for the city hosted events, that include the Veterans Day, the Summer Fest, fireworks, and Arts Commission events. There's $125,000 for museum funding. And the second half of our wayfinding in the hotel tax fund, $500,000, as well as in the hotel tax fund, city branding for $80,000. Next slide, please. Also this evening, there are four different public hearings for proposed rate increases with rates that impact the utility rate payers. What this slide shows is what the overall impact of those increases are to the average rate payer. So if you look in the, on the second column over, currently for fiscal year 2223, the average amount paid by a rate payer is $242.94. With the proposed increases, that would go to $251.60 for a difference of $8.66. So that equals a 3.6% increase for the average payer. Next slide, please. So the next steps will be on September 19. We'll hold a second public hearing on the budget and the tax rate. We'll vote to adopt the fiscal year 2024 budget. There's a, something that we have to do, which is ratify the property tax revenue increase. This is required by the local government code, and it's for a budget that'll generate more property tax revenue than in the previous year. The legislature requires us to ratify the property tax revenue increase, and then we will set the tax rate.
Utility bill. I know during our presentation before, y'all went to just a little bit more detail about um...
for proposed rate increases with rates that impact the utility rate payers. What this slide shows is what the overall impact of those increases are to the average rate payer. So if you look in the, on the second column over, currently for fiscal year '22, '23, the average amount paid by a rate payer is $242.94. With the proposed increases, that would go to $251.60 for a difference of $8.66. So that equals a 3.6% increase for the average payer. Next slide, please. So the next steps will be on September 19th. We'll hold a second public hearing on the budget and the tax rate. We'll vote to adopt the fiscal year 2024 budget. There's something that we have to do, which is ratify the property tax revenue increase. This is required by the local government code, and it's for a budget that'll generate more property tax revenue than in the previous year. The legislature requires us to ratify the property tax revenue increase. And then we will set the tax rate.
Utility bill. I know during our presentation before, y'all went into just a little bit more detail about utility rates and our bond rating. How those were affected if these rates weren't increased. Could you just elaborate on that just a little bit?
Yes, sir. And there were some additional slides for each one of those rate increase. Public hearings as well that we'll go over. But to your point, when we, the city's electric bond rating was downgraded. And one of the major reasons for that was the electric fund not raising rates enough to keep up with the inflationary pressures being put on the system. That was one of the reasons that the rating analysts provided as the reason for the downgrade.
Please continue. All right, other questions? Okay. I need to open the public hearing. And under this item, I have Tommy Jacque. And I believe she just left. And Ms. Capaletta, who joins us online, is next.
Good evening. My name is Professor Lisa Marie Capaletta. I live at 1322 Belvin, and they call me LMC. Inflationary pressure's being put on the system, and you want the working class to pay for that versus cutting waste. And I gave you some exemplar case studies. I mean, the city manager, you just gave her a $10,000 raise, right? When the rest of us are not getting raises. Bougie entitlement and equity virtual signaling, once again, is the theme of tonight's presentations. The speech from the city manager was pure optics. The videos say your voice matters, but do they really matter when you're not giving full information? And it's embarrassing that they're trying to say, "We talked to the Neighborhood Commission. We presented it to a board that nobody attends. And the presentation should have been broken down at the 6:00 PM meetings, not the 3 o'clock meetings when everybody is at work." Of course, he's going to provide you an overview, because he doesn't tell you about the $400,000 to Greater Partnership San Marcos that is not identified in the budget. In fact, it's buried in the budget, and it's never even talked about. You don't ever see Greater Partnership San Marcos in the budget. But yet, a third of it comes from the General Fund, and the Electric Fund, and the Wastewater Fund. And then you have individual staff member salaries, which are not broken down. And then there's $4.4 million in raises for a compensation study, which you do not know the cost of, and that's not in the budget. And then you have an excessive $500,000, plus another $100,000 from the American Rescue Plan that should be going to small businesses, plus an additional 50K for a board that has a track record of, mm. We'll just leave it there. And then we had the May 16th meeting at 3 o'clock, where there was no budget. Then we had the June 29th meeting at 3 o'clock, where there was no budget. And finally, we got the golden calf on August 15th, where the budget was. And then we have some videos. And they were released 10 days ago, and they were dumbed down. They were embarrassing. There's no link of how to pull the agenda, or the packet, or to sign up. There's nothing about all the costs that I articulate above. It's more of an advertisement, and we don't know the total drive-out price. I challenge every one of you to tell us by the end of this meeting, after some of you rubber stamp, which will result in the end of your political careers, because I'll be pumping out videos come election time, every time you vote for this, how much the drive-out price will be. Because the video is very general, and it doesn't take into account all of the other increases that you're going to raise. It's disingenuous to state that's only $22. And the minute that you vote for this is the minute that your political career ends. How can you justify city staff getting raises to the point of $4.4 million when the rest of the public is not getting a raise? Are you the Pharaoh? Or are you those who would gladly throw that tea over the ship for being taxed without representation? Jude Prather, I'm counting on you, and your track record of staying up for the people. Thank you for your time, and God bless San Marcos.
Lilo Jacques had signed up. Don't believe that person is here. Anyone in chambers wishing to speak on this item? Yeah, budget.
Sarah Teal, 1112 Sycamore. There are, as many have pointed out, competing interests for a limited amount of funds when it comes to the budget. Obviously, choosing how to spend those funds should not be because of connected interests. I'm curious to see if any council member will be recusing themselves from voting on specific budget items because of, or the discussion of specific budget items, because they have a connected interest, according to the city's Code of Ethics. I have been looking into that issue, the way that money is spent regarding connected interests at the City Council level. And I have been looking at the vote recusal records that the city holds. I see that Councilmember Prather often and rightly recuses himself on Texas state matters because of his connected interests. But there are some things where there are connected interests where I'm not seeing recusals. I did look at Mayor Houston's last campaign finance report and saw that she actually paid money to Councilmember Gleason, $435 to work on her campaign. That's not the only connected interest, I believe, that's on that budget. But that's a very clear and present connected interest that, according to the Code of Ethics, would require him to recuse himself from voting on her payment through the city. And so I am interested in seeing if each council member has carefully considered where their connected interests lie, and that they're prepared to recuse when they are voting to spend public money that they have a connected interest to. Looks like I still have a minute, so I don't, I have a bad feeling. I haven't researched it enough to understand it about the tiers number five money. The money that was collected from taxpayers that were supposed to go towards the Justice Center, and then was moved to doing things like, from what I can tell, I haven't looked yet, re-greening the lawn in the middle of a drought. That's seriously troublesome to me. I haven't looked at the details of how that tiers number five spent the money, but I do think it's just strange that it was supposed to be Justice Center money, and now it's historical restoration money. I'll have to look further into that, and I'll make other comments when I have more, a better understanding. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on the budget item number 13? If not, I will close the public hearing. And I am seeking a motion on adopting our operating budget as proposed.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the item number 13, our public budget hearing.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Prather. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gleason. And questions, concerns, statements? The floor is open?
I'll make a statement.
Mr. Scott.
This isn't my first rodeo. And I think that this particular budget, even though many times we get the idea of dropping a few points back to 59 or 56, sometimes makes a little bit of a difference. But the fact that we've stayed pretty current gives, you know, a big hats off to staff for kind of really going through and finding out our basic needs as a staff and as a community. As far as lowering at this particular time, I wouldn't be in favor of it mainly because it's Mrs. Reyes' first kind of push as she brought everything together to make it, you know, the staff and everybody work well together. So I really want to keep faith in her in the direction that we're heading, so that, you know, all her dreams of whatever, staff and police and fire and the community needs are met. So I'll be supporting it.
Anyone else?
I think that this is a sound budget, and it enhances public safety, utilities, core services, quality of life here in San Marcos. And I'll be supporting this as well.
All right, a couple of things. First of all, thanks to staff for putting the amount of work that it takes to do this. It's the most complicated thing we do. It's the most complicated thing staff does. And it's how we make all this go in a circle here. You know, I know that there's a lot of talk about what these pay increases have brought about for staff and for employees. It needed to be done. If you talk to anybody in the business world who has employees, you have to pay people additional money right now, or you're not going to be able to keep them. And those pressures are real. Inflationary pressures are not just on the average citizen. It's on the institutions themselves, too. That's why inflation is such a dangerous thing, and it spins out of control very quickly. I still wish there was some more additional funding for public safety. You know, we're going to have a lot of discussions about the City Hall situation. It's not going to be cheap. And if the state had not done something about property tax relief, I would be pushing additional homesteads. And I'll make a promise now that I will be discussing that again next year, bringing that forward. We don't know exactly what that's all going to look like from the state, or what they did, and how that's going to impact everyone's property tax bill that they're going to be receiving. But I just, you know, I know that the public can get very confused about all of this. And I do wish there was more time to have this out into the public so that you could dive into this a little longer than what it is. Encourage staff to, you know, if we can get this out in an additional couple of weeks, it does make a difference. So I think some of the public sentiment here that, you know, they're trying to hide something, I don't think is the case. This is just complicated. It's hard to get out there. And I know it's hard to go through all of this, and I understand frustration from the public side of it, because it's complicated for us to sit through all of this. But again, I am going to support this as it is. We will be discussing, and then I hope we continue to discuss, the public safety aspect for next year. Additional relief of what we can do on our end. Hopefully, inflation is taming down some, that we won't quite see the roller coaster ride that we have the last four years between COVID. And again, we're in this situation where it could be much worse. Staff did a great job during COVID and kept things under control, and from it spiraling out of control where we needed to do something very drastic. We're in better shape than most municipalities, mainly because our location in Texas and the local resources we have here. So I'll be supporting it. Thanks to staff. I hope the community has a chance to get ahold of this. They're going to have two more weeks for input. And if there's any questions or comments, send them to us and send them to staff. But thanks to everybody for all the work that it takes to do this.
Setting a tax rate is hard. This is my 50th time, not in a row. And I just want to reiterate some things that Ms. Reyes says. It said, "This rate is lower than the voter-approved rate from some years ago." The appraisals are the change, and that's the increase that people will see in the bottom line. But if you saw any news last year, you know that homes and other property rates were just going up. Our appraisal district is charged by law to go with what is real, and that is what they do. And I believe that these skyrocketing values have slowed down. January 1st is the magic date by which your property is valued. So I'm hoping that maybe next year, we will see some relief in the increases. There are good things in this budget. I'm happy that we're catching up with public safety, which we've been behind for a long time. I know that there were really, really hard decisions for our departments to make. And we know that nobody got everything they wanted by any stretch of the imaginations. And so I thank the staff, everyone who helped make those hard decisions as you were sitting around the table. I'm sure that some of those were not pleasant discussions. But I think that this is what we need for our city. We have, and of course, we're not caught up. We're not caught up. But people love many of the things that we offer. We heard the presentation at 3 o'clock about our green space. Our library ranks high, and polls that we've had, and others. So, and several other departments. So I'm going to be voting for this. And I thank the staff for hearing what we said at the Budget Policy Workshop back in February, for getting this budget out early. It's been out for, it will have been out for over a month, whenever we do the final vote, in two weeks. So thanks to everybody for making hard decisions and providing a budget that I feel like I can support.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I wasn't reading for me, it's Scott. Oh, you know, I have several concerns of public, our taxes. Some people think they're fair. In my opinion, they're not. I've seen a home that's appraised at $120, and then a Jason home, which looks pretty much the same, appraised at $360. I don't understand how they come up with that. But now going back to this, our budget, I think it's something that we need. Our employees deserve that raise. They work extremely hard as well. And, you know, this is a real hard decision for me, because I'm always against increases of any source. But I will be supporting the tax rate that's being proposed. Thank you.
And Mayor, if I could just say a couple of things. I know, you know, it would be our desire to get this out as soon as possible. And what I want to make sure, because maybe it's not really clear, is that the certified tax rolls don't come to the city until July 31st. So council and staff have worked through basically projections. And so up until that point. And until we have that certified tax roll, then that's when we know exactly what money's coming in. And so our staff has two weeks to turn that budget around and make sure that we're able to get that out to the public. And they work a lot to try to make sure we get it as soon as possible. So I just want to make sure the public understands that timing. I wish it was different. I wish we got the certified tax rolls a lot sooner, but we don't. And so it's what can we control? And, you know, we're trying really hard with that. The other thing is that I want to reduce taxes. Mr. Locke knows that. And I've also said, "I know council wants to reduce taxes. I want to reduce taxes." But the difficulty is, is just the fact that we have been in catch-up mode. And there are so many things that have taken a backburner just because of either prior decisions, or constraints, or because of, you know, the economy and circumstances, COVID and things. So with us having this mandate of public safety, it's not cheap. And so that is something that I'm proud that we've been able to do, is council has said, "We want to plan for public safety and how to implement it over the next several years." And we've been able to do that. So that's been the difficulty, too, in being able to say, "Can we reduce taxes this year?" Not while we're trying to catch up. However, that is something that we're going to continue to look at, even if it's small amounts and things going forward. And we know that's a priority, and just know that we share that priority. It's not, it doesn't go against us to think, "Okay, we just want to get every single bit that we can out of our citizens." We understand people are struggling, and we want to do the best that we can to try to be sensitive to that.
All right. Without further ado, Mr. Vina, we will vote.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza, Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza, and Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
And Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 0, with two absent.
Okay. Next is item 14.
Receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance 2023-62, setting the tax rate for the 2023 tax year at 60.30 cents on each $100 of taxable value of real property that is not exempt from taxation levying taxes for the use and support of the municipal government of the city for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2024, providing a sinking fund for the retirement of the bonded debt of the city, including procedural provisions and providing effective date and considerable of ordinance 2023-62 on the first of two readings.
Ms. Reyes? Or directly Mr. Locke?
Mr. Locke. And Mayor and City Council. We begin with that same budget calendar. I won't go through it again. It's all the different meetings that we've had to get us to this point, which is the first public hearing on the tax rate. And as we discussed, in two weeks, on September 19th, there will be a second public hearing on the tax rate as well. There are a couple of different definitions that are important to keep in mind when we're setting the tax rate. The first... mind when we're setting the tax rate. The first is the no new revenue rate, and that is the tax rate that will produce the same amount of property tax revenue on properties that are taxed in both the current year, fiscal year 23, and in fiscal year 24. There's the proposed budget rate and the maximum tax rate, both of which are 60.3 cents. The proposed budget rate is just the rate that was used to build the fiscal year 24 budget. And the maximum rate, that was the rate that city council set at the August 15th meeting, which is just the ceiling for the fiscal year 24 tax rate, which is also 60.3 cents. That does happen to be what our current tax rate is, the 60.3 cents for fiscal year 23. And then there's the voter approval rate, and it is 68.87 cents. And that is the maximum rate allowed by law without an automatic election. That is calculated by increasing the operation component of the no new revenue rate by 3.5% and adding in any unused increment from the prior three years. And the unused increment is the difference between the rate that the city sets and the voter approval rate. That difference adds up for the unused increment. Next slide, please. This slide has those same rates, and it just shows what the difference in the property tax revenue would be if that rate would, would be set rather than the proposed rate. The no new revenue rate, again, is 53.05 cents. And as you can see, that would generate approximately $6 million less revenue than what the current rate is that was proposed in the fiscal year 24 budget. The voter approval rate is 68.87 cents, and that would generate $7 million more revenue if the city were to go all the way up to the voter approval rate. It's, I did want to note that this is net of the tax increment reinvestment zone. So this is only looking at revenue that the city operates on and pays debt service with. Next slide, please. This slide compares the impact to the average homestead taxable value from fiscal year 23, the current fiscal year, to fiscal year 24. The average home value increased from 294,000 to 338,000. So it increased by over $43,000. When you factor in the homestead exemption that city council approved and during fiscal year 22, it became effective in 23, and so it'll also be effective in 24, that reduces the taxable value of the homestead by $15,000. So that takes that taxable value down to 323,000 for fiscal year 24. When you apply it to the tax rate, the annual tax levy will be over $1,900 for fiscal year 24. When you compare that to fiscal year 23, it's an increase of $263. So on a monthly basis, that's about $22 a month. At the bottom, it just shows what the savings are annually from the homestead exemption. It's $90. If, if you were to, an over 65 or disabled and also receiving the homestead exemption, the total save, annual savings is $300. Next slide, please. So this shows the total property tax revenue. This is including the tax increment reinvestment zones, and this is at 98%, which is the city's historical collection rate. So that's what we budget the property tax collections at. You can see the growth from 2023 to 2024 is from 48 million to 57 million. So it's a total of $9 million. Of that amount, existing property, that's the reappraisal growth that we were talking about, makes up $5.4 million of that. And new property that was added to the tax rule makes up $3.7 million of it. That's how you get to the $9 million. The slide shows the different components. What is the operational? That's in blue. The orange is the debt service, what goes towards debt, and the gray is the tax increment reinvestment zones. Next slide, please. This slide shows the city council approved tax exemptions. We mentioned a couple of slides ago that those were approved during fiscal year 22, and they became effective in fiscal year 23. So we'll begin with going over the total taxable value that was exempted from these exemptions. And that is the, the green background that you see. If you look at, start in 2017, the total value that was exempted as of that time was $40 million. And then as you, as you move across the years, when you go to 2022, the last year before that, the most recent change took effect, there was $56 million of value that was exempted. When the change took effect that made a homestead exemption 15,000 and increased the over 65 and disabled from 25,000 to 35,000 of an exemption, that, that the total value that was exempted grew from 56 million to 165 million. And in fiscal year 24, next fiscal year, that'll grow to 187 million. So in, in terms of the tax savings that the taxpayers have, you can see that it's been around $300,000. And then the current fiscal year, fiscal year 23, when those new exemptions took effect, it jumped up to $1 million. So that is a savings to the taxpayers of $700,000. And that amount is estimated to be $1.1 million next fiscal year of tax savings. Next slide, please. So at the conclusion of, of the public hearing, city council must announce that the vote on the tax rate will occur on September 19th at 6:00 PM, right here in city hall. This is just a requirement of the Texas tax code since the vote on the tax rate won't be held this evening. The next steps are, are the same as what we discussed with the budget. That next week is when the actual vote to adopt the budget, ratified... I said that again.
Next meeting.
My apologies. I'm stuck on next week. I must be excited to, to get there. In two weeks, September 19th, and also to set the tax rate. Thank you. And I'd be happy to address any, any questions before the public hearing.
Okay. Let me go ahead and do the public hearing. I will open the public hearing on setting the tax rate, item 14. And a couple of people who signed up, Mr. Rourke, were the folks who, who walked out of here a little, are there? Okay, thank you. I was afraid maybe they were, were still here, and I wanted to make sure I didn't miss them. Okay, then, Mr. Rourke.
Rob Rourke, 2805 Hunter Road. Somebody's got to come up here. And in a debate, in an open discussion, which we have in our society and in our area here, people don't understand the technicalities that we're talking about here. If you are talking tax rate versus tax valuation, bottom line, people are trying to take care of their kids. They're trying to keep themselves in their house that maybe their families had down here in Barrio Piscata. Okay, I agree with you, Mr. Gonzalez. There is a problem when we have one house valued at 200,000 and the next house next to it at 350,000. Why? Because they're not going and they don't know how to work the system. It's very safe for us to sit here and say, "Yes, here's the rate. This is what the taxpayers have authorized. This is what we're going to do." That's what you, you know, at this point, to go and to pull the rug out from underneath Ms. Reyes and all of the staff that put everything together. I'm not saying do that at this point. But we have got to be straight and honest with people. This reminds me of the old union tactics that they used to use in the Jimmy Hoffa days. All right? Was that, "Hey, we're not, we're not going to charge you that much. We're just doing this. And we could do worse." All right? Yes, we can do a lot. You guys, excuse me, all of the staff, everyone here, it's a big responsibility. I understand where you're at. I understand you're probably going to go and vote for this. But someone has to come up from the citizens and say, "It just ain't right. It's optics. And we got to do something about this." And I understand, and it's hard, and it's a system that you are working with, and it's a system we are playing with. But realize that it is not easy for the folks out there that are having to pay the taxes. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else in chambers or the lobby that wish to speak on this item, setting the tax rate? And Ms. Trevino, is Ms. Capoletta online? Okay, she's next. Ms. Capoletta?
Hi. Good evening. It's Professor Jane. I wish you would address me by my, my title that my, my supervisors and, and the higher administrations address me by. I, I find it very troubling that, that you refuse to do that. Good evening. My name is Professor Lisa Marie Capoletta, and I live at 1322 Belvin Street. And, and they call me LMC here in this community, bougie entitlement and equity virtual signaling. Pull the rug out. That's exactly what's happening to the taxpayers. And I want to apologize to the public that I have been campaigning rigorously for Shane, and I've, I wrote all of Mark's press releases, and he designed his yard signs on my computer. I want to apologize to the public for campaigning for Jude. And obviously, I was an opponent of Saul, and I've been speaking very highly of him. And, and please accept my apologies, because they have thrown you under the bus, led by the mayor, who I worked rigorously for against Mr. Tomites. And I want to apologize to Mr. Tomites for working so hard against him in those elections with Jane. This is a bizarre form of lateral racism on the part of the city staff and lateral classism. And I feel like your numbers guy is not being transparent. I feel like city staff are bank shotting, that the public do not have the time, the bandwidth, or the skill set to understand this information. I feel like there is lack of transparency, and I've experienced this firsthand when it's being involved in the comprehensive plan, $500,000 down the drain, and you guys still gave her that 10K raise. Then, then we have a situation with the land development code where we were promised neighborhood plans. The only reason why we got those is because myself and other people, quite frankly, who I wasn't getting along with, like Melissa Derrick and Rolon Sosado, made a stink about it. And, and I've watched for the better than of 33 years, city staff gaslight the public with false optics of reaching out. Because if they really were effective in their outreach, this chamber would be packed. And you notice not a dang one of you talked about that 4.4 million dollars, or you talked about the greater partnership San Marcos information that was buried in your budget. And I find that troubling. If you really, in your heart of hearts, thinks that this community can afford these hikes, then either you're out of touch, or there's something misaligned with your spiritual life. And you are in my prayers. Because if you really think it is okay to strap this with the public, with the optics of parks, and by the way, that was a myriad city staff person who came up there, and you all know it, who spoke about that, then I, I actually, you are in my prayers because there is a spirit that is influencing you and that goes for the, the city staff. I challenge the city staff to give us the total drive-out price for all of these rake hikes. And I think someday, you will see the fruits of what you have done. And that's on your conscience. Thank you for your time, and God bless San Marcos.
Okay. Anyone else, Ms. Trevino? All right. Then I will close the public hearing, and I weigh a motion on item 14, setting the tax rates.
And Mayor, also, following up on Mr. Locke's comment about just the announcement that the, the tax rate will also be adopted, going back to your slide.
Uh huh. On the 19th, our next regularly scheduled meeting. Okay. Anything else on that one? Mr. Gary?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see. Hold on. I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Gleason, seconded by Mr. Prather. Any questions, comments? I gave mine earlier because the tax rate and operating budget, you can't have the budget without setting, without knowing that's going to be the tax rate. I will make sure everyone knows that we do not have deficit budgets. We, it's a balanced budget. We don't spend any more than what we think we're going to bring in, and we're pretty conservative about what we think we're going to bring in. So just in case, don't anybody get confused with the feds, the federal government, we are no deficit budget. Okay. Anything? We kind of said it all during the budget, didn't we? Okay. Ms. Trevino, without further ado.
Ms. Garza, Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza, Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
And Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes 5 to 0 with two absent.
Okay. Counsel, it is 7:26. Normally, we would be taking a break at 7:30. Would you all like to break, take a break now before we do the rate setting? I hear a break. Keep going. Keep going? Okay. We'll, we'll do the, the rates then. Okay. Ms. Reyes, Mr. Locke, whomever.
Let me read caption first.
Yeah, I just want to figure out who needs to be heading to the podium if, if, if they, okay. Then, then we're ready to go, Ms. Trevino.
Receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance 2023-63, amending the rates for electric utility services in accordance with the section 86.177 of the San Marcos Code of Ordnances, including procedural provisions, and declare an effective date, and consider approval of ordinance 2023-63 on the first of two readings.
Mr. Locke.
Thank you. This, this first slide provides an overview of the Electric Utility Operating Fund. It has the fiscal year 22, actual revenues and expenses, and the change in fund balance, the budgeted 23, and where we're estimated to finish in 23. And then fiscal year 24, and this is with the proposed rate increase already built into it, you can see that revenues are 72.7 million and expenses 73.9 million, where there is some planned use of fund balance of 1.2 million, and that is in some one-time expenses, not recurring expenses. Next slide, please. At the July 27, on July 27, 2023, the Citizen Utility Advisory Board received a presentation on the electric user rates and the expenses of the electric system. The board voted unanimously for a minimum of a 5% rate adjustment to the electric base rates. The board made the comment that they, they realized the challenges and, and asking the community for a 10% rate adjustment to the base rate. So that's why they left it as a minimum of 5%. A 5% rate adjustment equals out to be about a 2% increase for the average monthly residential customer. The 10% rate adjustment is about a 3% increase for the average residential customer. What's included in the budget is what the board recommended, which is the 5%. Next slide, please. Some of the major cost increases for the electric system in fiscal year 24, first is personnel. The compensation study implementation for the employees within the electric fund will be about $500,000. There is one new position included in the fiscal year 24 budget, a meter data specialist with a cost of $109,000. There are some one-time costs, including replacing two bucket trucks that have reached end of life, and it's, there's a three-year lead time to receive these trucks. So that's a, a cost of $715,000. And for the fiscal year 23 capital improvement program for the electric fund, the, the debt service for that will come online in fiscal year 24, and that's $640,000. So those are some of the costs that increase the fiscal year 24 budget. Next slide, please. This slide is a slide that the firm that did the rate analysis presented to the Citizens Utility Advisory Board. It has what the operational results would be as of fiscal year 24, using the current rates without any kind of rate increases. rates without any kind of rate increases. So if you follow it, it shows the total revenues, the total expenses, and then it has, on the second row from the bottom, the revenue deficiency or sufficiency. And as you can see, the rate analysis showed if we did nothing, we would finish about $2.9 million with less revenues than expenses, that we'd be drawing down fund balance. With the 5% increase, it's $1.9 million, and with the 10% increase, it's $941,000. Since this presentation, the utilities did reduce some of their expenses, so that's why the expenses that you see in the budget are lower than what are actually in this rate analysis. Next slide, please. This shows the proposed rate comparison for residential electric customer. So it compares the electric rates to other peer cities in the region. And as you can see, with the city's electric rate is, the current rate is the lowest, and even after the proposed increase, it will still be the lowest amongst our peer electric Next slide, please. And the same is true with the commercial rates. The city's current rates are the lowest, and they will still be lowest even after the This slide shows the electric utility rate history. And just something to keep in mind, as we go through the different rate adjustments, using 2018 as the base year, which is what this slide shows, the rate adjustment since 2018, there's been a total of 23% of inflation across that time period. So it has cost the city 23% more to provide the same level of service across those years. That doesn't include any kind of new services or new costs that come on board along the way. That's just providing the same level of services. And as you can see with the electric rate, there have been two increases, including the one that's proposed in fiscal year '24. There was one in fiscal year '22 and '24. Next slide, please. I'd be happy to address any questions prior to the public hearing.
Let me go ahead and do the public hearing first. I will open the public hearing. This is on amending the rates for the electric utility. Looking to see if there's anyone in chambers or in the lobby wishing to comment on this. If not, we will go to Ms. Capoletta, if she's still online with us.
Hi, Jane. It's Professor Capoletta. I'm very passive-aggressive on your part. Good evening. My name is Professor Lisa Marie Capoletta, and I live at 1322 Belvin. And the people in this community call me LMC. And, you know, you guys canceled the debt of the utility customers years ago. Remember when you did that? And it's troubling that the American Rescue Fund money has not gone to the small businesses. Do you think their outlook is any better now? It seems like the only ones getting raises are city staff. It's almost like a feudal system. Do you think citizens can afford these increases? The Electric Utility Operation Fund is funding 1/3 of the $400,000 to the Greater Partnership San Marcos, which is the organization which brings companies which drain our aquifer. So, and I have a real issue, I'm sorry, with San Marcos River Foundation telling people to rat out their neighbors for the grass. I think it's stupid if you water your grass. And I've got a neighbor who worked against me to ruin my yard, but I would never drop a dime on him. That's just like, that's very weird behavior to encourage that. But those are the kinds of businesses that you're funding with that. And, you know, I don't know if you all have ever read Paulo Freire. I would encourage you to pick up the book. And I don't, and it's been taken out of context now with all these wokeny wokenys. But if you understand the difference between a critical intellectual and an instrumental intellectual, an instrumental intellectual facilitates spaces of oppression, which is exactly what the presenter and his homies are doing tonight. They're not being transparent. You, he, I mean, let's face it, they didn't talk about in the videos the $4.4 million in raises, right? And they didn't talk about the 400K to the Greater Partnership San Marcos. They gave you a cherry-coated two-minute video dumbed down for the public with no information on how to sign up. That's an instrumental intellectual. They're instrumental to oppression. And then you have your critical intellectuals. The problem is the lack of engagement. And I think our Equity Officer, she seems like a really nice lady, but, you know, the problem is, is that there's nobody here, because they don't understand. It's very, or they're working tonight to pay for those bills. And I'm not sure that you guys are, they're not being transparent. I think that the utility board is a joke. You know I go to all those meetings, and I certainly didn't know about this. Do you think the public knew about this? I think it's very disingenuous for city staff to say, well, they had a meeting, like it was super transparent, splashed across your Facebook page, and on your homepage, citizens come out and speak against the utility rates. And you guys, city staff, you're intellectuals that are instrumental to oppression. You're lining your pockets to the expense of your fellow man, and it's shameful that you people are voting for it. And I'm going to remember this your next election, pumping out videos. Thank you for your time, and God bless San Marcos.
I will close the public hearing and await a motion on amending rates for the electric utility.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Gleason, seconded by Mr. Prather. Discussion, comments, questions? Mr. Scott.
I have a question. How much growth did we get this last year from new residents, housing-wise?
In terms of the number of houses?
Yeah, new accounts for electric. Two?
Two percent.
Give me a number.
If you'd asked us on the message board, you would have those numbers.
Director Yorth can provide that answer.
I'll use the message board.
Howdy, Counsel. Tyler Yorth, Director of Utilities. We started the year in around 26,000 electric meters and just under 13,000 water meters. We've increased that to 26 and 700, round number. All right, so a couple percent there. Water was a little bit higher, because our water service area is larger than the electric and is further out where some of the developments are coming in. So we saw a higher increase on the water. But just, it was less than 1,000 new electric meters this year, net.
Thanks.
Mr. Gonzalez.
My question is, since you made a comparison with other cities, did you compare apples to apples? And what I mean by that, did they own their own electric company like we do, or buy so many kilowatts?
And I, I think, I think that's your, well, we'll be able to provide a better. Yeah, thank you for that. The, it is absolutely apples to apples. And so, instead of determining who had their own power plants or not, however they deliver that power, so when we show that here, you know, 1,000 KWH in San Marcos is $106.15, and the next one is Seguin at 109.07, when we look at these numbers, when we prepare this chart, what we're looking for is what you pay when you get your bill for that much KWH. And where we get it from, or how we get it to San Marcos, how we distribute it, is all reflected in that number.
Okay. I guess the question again, but they did not own, like, we own ours, in a sense. I, I mean, I don't see how we're coming up ahead if we own ours and, you know, we're not really saving as much as I thought we would.
So let me run down through the list. So College Station does not own outright. New Braunfels owns separate wholesale agreements, do not own out. Austin owns most of their power. PEC owns a significant portion, less than 50%, but a significant portion. San Antonio owns most of their power plants. Blue Bonnet has assets. Seguin, I don't think has any, but that's the one on the list I'm not sure of. And then, of course, ours, our power plant only represents 15% of our total usage.
Okay. Well, there's a difference on people that.
It's all over the map, really.
All right, that's, that's, you know, one other question. Since we're building all these homes, when is it going to start paying off where taxpayers can see the difference on their utility bills and water bills? But we've been talking about this for many years now.
So let me address this item from an electric-only standpoint, since we have water coming up. And if Mr. Gary will let me answer both now, I will. But on the electric, it's interesting. So when we talk about the growth in electric, it's rooftop. Residential rates, city of San Marcos is a money loss. We lose money on rooftops. We under-recover our cost of service by 8% for residential. So every new home you go see go up that's in our electric service area, we're losing money to it. We compensate for that by overrecovering on the cost of service from our commercials. So the answer to the question is, when are you going to see relief on that? Is when we start seeing more commercial customers come in, high users that help offset that cost. More rooftops doesn't help. It just, it just means we have more, you know, loss leader. So for us, the answer is, we need more commercial development inside the city to bring in the excess revenue, and that's what's going to take the pressure off. If we don't have more commercial come in with increased rooftops, these rates are going to keep going up, because every rooftop, we lose money.
That's great news. I never quite understood it that way. But I think we should be concentrating on the commercial part of it, instead of all this homes being built and apartments and everything else. Well, thank you. That was good information for me.
Well, and as we expand, there's more expense, correct?
Well, there is, but, you know, all utilities plan on the expansion, the CIP plans that we have, those kinds of things. It's anticipating, when we do that, that we have growth, and that we are bringing more customers on. But again, for electric, it's essential that we start bringing in more businesses if we're going to flatten that rate. Remind you that after the COEAD meeting, the projections were three consecutive rate increases, starting with this effective 5%, right? And then hopefully after that, everything looks clear. But again, if we continue to do nothing but residentials, then you're going to see another rate increase sequence out there in the future.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Questions, concerns, comments on the electric utility rate increase?
I'll just throw it out there that everyone who works for the electric utility works their tail off. I get zero complaints about them. They're very responsive. We're very fortunate to have our own utility. It's well-run, and you can see by these apples-to-apples comparisons, we do a better job at keeping rates down. Fortunately, there was some forethought of the Ferguson situation that helps offset a lot of that. And I think those are the kind of things we're going to have to look at in the future, too, what other opportunities are there going to be for investments to potentially offset some other future things, too. Those are big discussions we may have to have about what else may be needed to help us, you know, 20, 30 years down the road. But I just wanted to thank staff of everything, you know, we get complaints about a lot of stuff. I don't get very many complaints about the electric utility. And I know rates seem like they've gone up for everybody because of our usage, and it's been terrible this summer. But just thanks to staff for the amount of effort they put in on the electric utility side. It's an additional complicated thing that a lot of municipalities don't have to deal with. It's a budgetary thing, it's very complicated, and it's a very technical thing to do, too. So thanks to staff for the amount of work they put into this.
Anyone else? Mr. Trevino.
No.
Aye.
No.
Okay. Hold on. Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
And Ms. Garza. An absence, one, two, three. So the motion fails with, sorry, I scribbled a lot.
Three in favor and two against and two absent.
Yes, two absent.
How's that work with the scheduling and the budget?
What are, what's the net result of the failure of this motion?
We can't, we can't go forward with the operating budget as presented on the electric utility side, because it was predicated on the increase in those rates. So we'll need to.
So for second reading of the budget, you'll need to bring us back something different?
We'll have to look at the revised budget and how that, how that will work. I mean, there, we're going to need to also talk about the bonding implications in terms of what that means.
It's true.
I'll change my vote.
I'm sorry, Mr. Scott.
I'll change my vote.
Mr. Gary, how do we formally do that?
Motion to reconsider. Well, you can, you can just make another motion, make the motion again, and take.
Motion to reconsider.
Make the motion to reconsider.
Do we need to do that? I guess we do, if we're going to do it again. Okay, so we have a motion.
I believe it has to be from the.
Someone who voted on the prevailing side. So did you make that motion?
I did not. He did.
Okay. Then I will make that motion to reconsider. And this is simply whether we want to vote again. So I made a motion to reconsider. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Can you second it?
I'll second it.
Thank you. That's cleaner. Okay. So we have on the table is a motion to reconsider the vote that we just took on item 15. Mr. Trevino, if you will go around the table.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza. And Mr. Gonzalez.
No.
Okay, the motion passes four to one with two absent.
Okay. So what that does is that puts the motion on the 15th. I need another motion in a second, correct? Okay. So I will make that motion. Will somebody make a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Prather is doing the second, and so we will vote again on amending the rates, which is a raise on the electric utility. Mr. Trevino.
I, discussion.
Okay, sure.
It's just natural for me to say no on increases, electric, water, sewer, so. But I do not want to stop the direction that staff has put together, so. That's it.
Aye.
And I have a question for city attorney. If this motion had, it stayed 3-2, does the first hearing require a positive vote to have a second hearing? Would that have required a yes on the, on the motion to move forward with the second reading?
Yes, that's how it usually works, the second reading.
Just wanted to confirm that.
The second reading would not have happened.
That's correct. That's how it's typically done.
Yeah.
I just wanted to confirm that.
That's why we do it.
Mr. Scott's wanting to move the process forward.
We probably would, just to further clarify, I guess, something like that happened, we'd either have to look at, an alternative motion could be to, you know, they'd have to probably come back with a proposed different rate and have a special meeting and whatnot, and again, factor in your budget implications, so.
Okay. Mr. Trevino, we're going to make another round on this one.
Okay. Mr. Prather.
Aye.
And Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
And Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza, Mr. Gonzalez, and Mr. Mendoza. Okay, the motion passes four to one with two absent.
Okay. We're now at item 16 for water. Checking to see if anybody wants to take a break. Okay, we're taking a break after the next one. Okay, Mr. Trevino.
Receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance 2023-64 amending rates for the water, wholesale water, reclaimed water, and wastewater treatment utility services in accordance with section 86 of the San Marcos City Code of Ordnances, including procedural provisions, and declare an effective date, and consider approval of ordinance 2023-64 on the first of two readings.
Mr. Locke.
Thank you again, Mayor and City Council. This first slide provides some operational activity for the Water-Wastewater Fund, again, showing the fiscal year '22 actuals, the budget for '23, where we think we're going to finish for fiscal year '23, and then the fiscal year '24 proposed budget and
Thank you again, Mayor and City Council. This first slide provides some operational activity for the Water-Wastewater Fund. Again, showing the fiscal year '22 actuals, the budget for '23, where we think we're going to finish for fiscal year '23, and then the fiscal year '24 proposed budget. And this has the proposed rate adjustment of 5% already built into it. So for revenues, the total revenues would be $63.2 million, expenses $66 million. There is a planned use of fund balance of $2.8 million. And you notice that there's $3.6 million of one-time expenses in the fiscal year '24 budget. So that planned use of fund balance isn't for recurring expenses. Next slide, please. The Citizens Utility Advisory Board, as we discussed with the electric rates, held a meeting on July 27th, and they also received a presentation on their user rates for the water wastewater system. The board voted unanimously for a 5% rate adjustment for water and wastewater services. Next slide, please. Some of the major cost drivers for fiscal year '24 in the Water-Wastewater Fund, beginning with personnel, the compensation study implementation for the employees within the Water-Wastewater Fund is $514,000. There are three new positions included in the fiscal year '24 budget, a senior engineer, a collection supervisor, and a utility control supervisor. The sum of all of those and associated equipment is $500,000. The, some big operating costs include, with the Alliance Regional Water Authority plant coming online, the city now has to cover its share of the operating costs. And the estimated cost for that plant is $1.4 million in fiscal year '24. The contract to manage the surface water treatment plant increased by $233,000. The Canyon Regional Water Authority contract increased by $175,000. And wastewater treatment plant contract increased by $170,000. I mentioned those one-time costs on the other slide. Include replacement of multiple vehicles and equipment that reached end of life that needed to be replaced. The sum of all of those replacements is $1.2 million. And some new requests for equipment and improving infrastructure is $2.4 million. Next slide, please. This is a similar slide that we saw on the electric. And the rate analyst showed this at the Citizens Utility Advisory Board meeting, and it showed the impact of different percent increases of to revenues. So if we stay as with the current rates, the total revenue would be $59.9 million and resulting in a shortfall of $3.4 million. With the proposed 5% increase, that increases revenues to $62.7 million and the proposed shortfall is $900,000. Next slide, please. This slide shows the residential comparison to those same peer cities. And it shows it for the average or in-average residential user using 5,000 gallons. You can see that the city is about mid, maybe a little bit below mid-pack for the average residential user currently. And as well as proposed, we wouldn't change positions in in relation to where we are compared to our peers. Next slide, please. On the commercial side, we are at the top. This is for a commercial user using 50,000 gallons. Currently, we are at the top when looking at both the cost of water and sewer, and that's where we would stay after the proposed adjustment. Next slide, please. This shows the historical rate adjustment for the Water-Wastewater Fund. This fund has did more adjustments trying to keep pace with inflation. As you can see, with the Citizens Utility Advisory Board recommendations and the ultimate rate adjustments that occurred. Next slide, please. I'd be happy to address any questions prior to the public hearing, if there are any.
Let's go ahead and do the public hearing. I will open the public hearing on item 16, amending rates for water, wholesale water, reclaimed water and wastewater treatment utility services. Is there anyone in chambers in the lobby wishing to speak on this item? If not, is Ms. Capoletta still online with us? Ms. Capoletta, you are our first, last and only speaker on this item this evening.
Well, thanks, Jane. It's not a, it's not a shocker. It goes over everybody's head and there's been no outreach. My name is Professor Lisa Marie Capoletta. I live at 1322 Belvin, they call me LMC. And it isn't a shocker, keep in pace with inflation. And yet the citizens don't have this luxury. A fluent fee structure would offset this excessive use of water, and it would encourage green businesses with incentives, and it would stop the problem of drought. And yet, this costs are being passed on to the residents. They could have increased the rates for those who are in the industrial sector or those in the business sector, but they chose not to. Some of you love drinking from the trough of the developers to line your campaign pockets. And that's all going to come out when the videos start pumping out, when your elections kick off. The citizen advisory board, they're bankshotting that citizens don't attend. There was no public relations on the part of hall. City staff love that citizens don't attend, just like the boards, they, just like all these boards. City staff spoon-feed their desires, just like they do to you on the agenda. They give you a little golden spoon, you suck it up, right? And then you just do what they want. Very rarely do things land on that agenda that that you guys want. It's all from the spoon, the teat of the city staff. Entitled bougie veneer of equity. Look at your constituents in the eye when you walk through those aisles, because they're going to be looking at you when those videos come out. Everyone is increasing their contracts, but you refuse to tighten your belts. You could have hired a legion of firefighters. You could have hired a legion of police officers, but you didn't. Instead, you also ignored the fact that you could have purchased more training and equipment for our first responders, but you didn't. You want a cooling tower in your budget, but you didn't even think have the bandwidth. Think outside the box for emergency backup generators when we have a flood or we have a freeze. It's a lie that those new homes do not function as gentrifying, and it's a lie that they will not increase any sort of offset for the taxation of the public because we haven't seen it, and my phone's been ringing off the hook and people keep asking it. You guys have caved in, and it's, you know, we all know it's a pre-functionary requirement that you're not going to change your minds once the second public hearing hits. We all know that these social services are for the low income, and yet you're expecting the missing middle and the working class to pay for it. And when it comes to basic services, you're rewarding the rich, you're taxing the poor, and you're still asking more of us during inflation. And at the end of the night, you're never going to get that drive-out price for all these rake heights. Thank you for your time, and God bless San Marcos.
I will close the public hearing, and I am seeking a motion on water and wastewater rates.
May I make that motion?
Motion for Mr. Prather, seconded by Mr. Scott. Questions, concerns?
Like our utilities, you know, we've made long-term investments, previous councils. Hopefully, future councils make those kind of investments. You know, despite the Edwards Aquifer being right below us, you know, our citizens and the priority is that we don't want to use that water, we want to use other water. So we pipe it in from basically Canyon Lake. And in the future, we'll be piping in water from, you know, through the Alliance Regional, Carizo Wilcox Aquifer, we're making those long-term investments. I also want to point out that our commercial water rates are the most expensive of all the other peer cities. So we're trying to provide relief to our homeowners, our citizens, and maximize the utility rates regarding water with our commercial utility consumers. So this is another, we're making those investments. Investments cost money, utilities cost money. And our Citizen Utility Advisory Board made a unanimous recommendation to improve this 5% adjustment rate as well. With all that, I'll be, I'll be supporting this.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. When you said 5%, that includes the water and the wastewater?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. I lost my train of thought here. Oh, the bills, when someone gets a bill for the wastewater and water, what other charges are in that bill?
There's the water, wastewater, the resource recovery, the community enhancement fee. And if the, if the person is within the, receives electric services from the city, the electric rate would be on there as well. I think I covered them all.
And that's easy, told us to how much money-wise?
There was a slide that that we had up earlier. Let me pull it up real quick, and I will tell you.
You're looking at the total increase for?
For those extra, for not the wastewater or not the water.
Yeah, we had a slide on that.
So for the, so currently, for all of those services, electric water, wastewater, stormwater is the one that that I forgot. Resource recovery and community enhancement, for the average residential rate payer, they pay $242.94. After all of the proposed rate adjustments for fiscal year '24, the amount would be $251.60. So the difference is $8.66, which is a 3.6% increase.
That's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you.
And that's assuming all of these rate increases were adopted, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, yeah, eight, less than seven. I'm up. Anything else over here?
I got a couple things. So, you know, look, no, no one is happy about having to raise these rates, you know? And I'm, and I'm, I'm glad to see even after the apples-to-apples comparisons here that we're really mid-pack when it comes to residential rates. You know, I know the the commercial stuff looks, it's a lot of money. But it's one of those where they are using more resources, and we're able to keep the residential rates a little more in check because of that. You know, the big thing here is, with the growth comes problems, and this infrastructure is not cheap. And I I want to give some credit to the former councils, our regional partners, and staff for having the forethought of, in another year or two, when this alliance project comes online, our community is not going to have to worry about water for a long time. And that these rates include that 10-year, $400 million project to get this project up and going. And it's one of the best things that the state of Texas has done, that the Water Development Board and the communities and the regional partners came together to get this done. And I think it's, it's going to be one of the proudest things that I think this city is going to be able to do and look and say, we're doing a good job of running our electric utility. We had the forethought to to put together these regional water projects, and the state helped fund them in a lot, in a lot of ways. Without state backing, we couldn't have done it. And I hope this is kind of a blueprint for how to run these utilities. And it does cost extra money. But but kudos to everybody for for getting this stuff done and trying to do this in a balanced way. And I don't want to see our bond rating go down on any of these funds because it does have an impact if we need to fund a big project in the future. So I'm going to be supporting them. I'm not happy about it. No one's happy to get an additional couple dollars on their bill. But if this helps provide water to our community for the next 40 years, I'm going to be supporting that. So thank you for everybody for, you know, for input in the community. I know it's not easy, but I'll be supporting it.
Well, Sid, and thank you for covering the Alliance water part because at least we're going to have water. And I'm going to predict that some of these communities, that their rates are lower than ours as they seek future water, those rates are not going to stay where they are. So we were just ahead of the game on all of that. Anything else? I just want to make a couple of points, and that is that that people are paid from these utility funds. And so as we need to retain our our good workers, we need to make sure that all the things we said about general fund are true in the utility funds. Also, these utility funds are silos. The water, the money that we bring in water wastewater stays with the water wastewater system. We're not raising rates here to pay for staff that would be out of the general fund, like police and fire. So these are our silos as they're supposed to be and legally need to be. So that's all I had to add on that. And if there's nothing else, Mr. Trevino, we will vote on water rates.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mary Houston?
Aye.
Ms. Garza, Mr. Gonzalez?
No.
Mr. Mendosa and Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes four to one and two absent.
All right, it is 8:05. We are going to take a break. And please be back in your seat, ready to start at 8:15. I call this meeting back to order at 8:17. Mr. Trevino, item 17.
Yes, receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance 2023-65, amending the rates for residential and multifamily customers of solid waste programs, known as resource recovery in accordance with section 66.028 of the San Marcos Code of Ordinances, including procedural provisions and declare an effective date and consider approval of ordinance 2023-65 on the first of two readings.
Mr. Locke? Thanks for hanging out with us this evening, we appreciate it.
Well, fortunate for you that there's only one more item after this that you'll have to listen to me. So we're almost finished with my my items. This item is for the Resource Recovery Fund, and this first slide provides some background on the financial activity of the fund for fiscal year '22. Again, the '23 budget, where we're estimating to finish in fiscal year '23, and what fiscal year '24 looks like with the proposed rate adjustment. With those adjustments, the total revenues are $7.2 million and the total expenses were $7.2 million. So we're estimating to bring in the same amount as our expenses for fiscal year '24. Next slide, please. There is a proposed 3% rate adjustment included in, and this is for both the single-family and the multifamily users. Looking at some of the big cost drivers in this fund, there are personnel within the Resource Recovery Fund, and the cost of the compensation study implementation for this fund is $47,000. The solid waste residential contract, which is the single largest expense in this fund, is going to increase $205,000. Next slide, please. This slide shows the rate adjustments over from fiscal year '18 through fiscal year '24. In total, the single-family has been adjusted a total of 20% and the multifamily 25%. And we touched on with the electric and water wastewater, that total inflation during this period is, was or has been 23%. And so that's just looking at the the cost to provide the current level of service, not any kind of new programs or activities that this fund has provided over the past five years. And I'd be happy to address any questions that there may be prior to the public hearing.
Let me go ahead and go with the public hearing. I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in chambers or in the lobby who wishes to speak on this item. Mr. Trevino, is Ms. Capoletta still with us online? Okay, she will be next.
Yes, Professor Capoletta is still here. Hi, my name is Professor Lisa Marie Capoletta, they call me LMC, and I live at 1322 Belvin. You have erased the public out of the equation. It's taxation without representation. No time, they're raising kids, it's difficult to understand, there's been no outreach, there's no public engagement, it's not equitable. You have instrumental intellectuals with extra special skill sets who select selective slides, and then they don't give us the full information. And then you have very few critical intellectuals in the bunch. Fiscal excellence is one of your guiding principles, and you're far from that. It's all smoke and mirrors. The only time you encourage the citizens is when you want to get out the vote for your own lust for power. It's a two-tiered system. We have a maintenance man, a former auto- It's a two-tiered system. We have a maintenance man, a former auto supply retail worker. We have an elected official who penny pitches her push cards, and a veteran, and then we have the city staff. It's a two-tiered system. The taxpayers are funding the fat of the golden calf, all with the optics that it's a public hearing. You could have opened this up for a bid, you could have tightened your belts, year by year, dollar by dollar, you're expecting a buela after a buela to pay for that. Come election time, you'll smile, and you said it was a difficult decision. Come election time, you'll be going door-to-door, and you'll shoot the shizzle, and you'll smile and shake hands, but in your heart, you know, you've taxed those people. In your hearts, you know that you're making it more difficult. It's one less pizza party for a kid. It's one less gift for Christmas time. It's one less drive to go see a family member, because year by year, you're taxing the public. At the end of the night, city staff will not be able to give you the total drive-out price. They won't be able to tell you on a tiered level, for those who live in higher-level houses, for those who live in lower-income houses. At the end of the night, if I ask that question during Questions from President Public, Jane's going to cut me off, or she's going to defer to Joe. Joe's going to do the shuffle, just like Richard Gere in Chicago. He's going to, right, you know, you know that, Joe, right? You know that scene, that's Joe, that's what Joe's going to do, and then they're going to get back to me via email, and now the crumbs from the table, I'll get it on the message board. It's a wonder people don't attend, because you don't want them to. It's all by design, and it's worse than the T-Part. Do you guys know, at this point, people have to make eighty-five thousand dollars a year to keep up? What, it, it, that's worse than the nineteen twenties, and you're not getting that. And you don't care, as exemplified by your votes, but soon, the public will know when you're up for election. Thank you for your time, and God bless San Marcos.
I will close the public hearing, and council, I'm looking for a motion on amending the rates for residential and multifamily customers of solid waste programs, also known as resource recovery.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Prather, seconded by Mr. Scott. And also, if anybody's wondering why we're not talking about, uh, residential and multifamily, when we're talking about, uh, waste pickup, it's a commercial, uh, entities' contract for their own. They're not on the, the city system for our waste haulers, so there's that. Okay, so, questions, concerns on this item? I think I'll just repeat concern for, um, for ratepayers, but it's, um, again, a small increase, and as Mr. Gonzalez reminds us, it all adds up, and you're absolutely right on that. But right now, it's not adding up to a whole lot for any individual customer, but we've, we've got tasks that we need to accomplish out of this fund, so I'll just leave it with that. Anyone else? Yes, no?
No, okay.
Okay, Ms. Trevino.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mary Houston?
Aye.
Ms. Garza, Mr. Gonzalez?
No.
Mr. Mendosa, Mr. Prather?
Aye.
And Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes forward to zero with one absent.
Moving on to item eighteen, Ms. Trevino.
Receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixty-six amending the rates for the clean community fee known as community enhancement fee in accordance with section sixty-six point zero-zero-two of the San Marcos Code of Ordinances, including procedural provisions and declare an effective date and consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixty-six on the first of two.
My, my show.
Right, hold on.
Yeah.
But hold that thought for just a moment. Mr. Locke?
Thank you again, Mayor and City Council. And this is the final public hearing related to the budget this evening, and it's on the, uh, community enhancement, uh, fee. Uh, we begin with the slide that provides an overview of the operational activity for fiscal year twenty-two, what the twenty-three budget, um, looks like, and where we think that we're going to finish fiscal year twenty-three. Uh, for fiscal year twenty-four, including the proposed rate adjustment, the total revenues will be one million eighty-five thousand, um, and the total expenses are proposed to be that, that same amount. Next slide, please. At the last meeting, uh, City, uh, Council asked staff to go back and find an, an alternate, alternative way that, um, was more equitable, equitable with residential and commercial um, to do this rate adjustment. Uh, previously, uh, there was, the residential increase was going to be a dollar as well as the commercial increase. Mr. Carr and, and his team went back and, and, um, found that for an eighty-five cent increase, and a commercial for residential and commercial three dollars and fifty cent increase, that that would generate enough revenue to, to cover the same amount as the dollar residential and dollar commercial that was, uh, proposed at the last meeting. Um, on the expense side, uh, this fund also has employees in it, and the cost to implement the compensation study in this fund is twenty-five thousand dollars. There was a budget policy direction from, uh, City Council to include some, uh, funding for emergent needs that might come up throughout the fiscal year, and there was twenty-five thousand dollars that was added, um, for that purpose in the budget as well. Next slide, please. This slide provides the rate adjustments from fiscal year eighteen forward, and as you can see, there hasn't been a rate adjustment during that timeframe. This is the first rate adjustment being proposed in, in the community enhancement fund. And that concludes the presentation. I'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
I will hold those till after the public hearing. I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in chambers or the lobby who wishes to speak on this item. If not, then we will go to, if Ms. Capoletta is still online with us, we will go... There she is.
Hi, Jane, it's Professor. I'm, I'm not sure why you're so passive-aggressive about that. Good evening, my name is Professor Lisa Marie Capoletta, and I live at thirteen twenty-two Belvin, and they call me LMC. I thought it was cute how Ju- Jude was like chomping at the bit to make a motion to approve without even having the city staff presentation or a public hearing, and it really wasn't much of a presentation. I think it's important for our youngsters to have somewhere to go do their graffiti, and I think that we should have some sort of program included in that. Y'all could have pushed for all of commercial to have offset these expenses, but you didn't, because those are the highest water users. I saw that tell just Mark Gleason, you know it. You know you could have those electric, those rates go up, and you can smile all you want, it was a tell. You know that you can have commercial pay for it, but you're not doing it, because they line the slush funds of your campaign. They pay for those big green yard signs. Instead of asking, he did it again, instead of asking the public to pay for it, why not have the highest water users? You ask people not to water their lawn, which I think is stupid to begin with, but it's not as stupid as Virginia telling people to rat out their neighbor. And yet, the county has a lush green lawn, and then we've got the state tapping into the aquifer, and I met, not a dang one of you has the guts to ask Joe, or Stephanie, or Lori, or the man who's been up here all evening, how much was the compensation study? I double dare you to ask how much that compensation study cost the taxpayers. You're covering the keister of city staff, and you know, I think there's some really good programs in this one. I mean, I can stand by a couple of these, with the exception of the graffiti. We've got a lot of graffiti and rueva going, but you know what? We have a criminal element in this community. And that's why you should have increased funding to the firefighters, and you should have increased funding for the cops, not just the bare minimum, but you should have really amped it up. But you didn't. Instead, you gave the money to the Greater Partnership San Marcos, and you funneled it, because it's not a line item for the public to see, and it surely wasn't in the videos from city staff, which calls into question any of those videos that were pumped out. It's just like the master plan, the comprehensive master plan, as well as the land development code. They cherry pick comments to gentrify the community, and you know it. And the only people doing well right now are city staff, and you're bowing down, and that's the problem. That's why we need degreed people on that city council who can process through that paperwork like me and ask the critical questions. And you're not doing that, not a dang one of you. Thank you for your time, and God bless San Marcos.
I will close the public hearing, and I now, uh, await a motion. Was that you, Mr. Prather?
Yes, ma'am.
Earlier, all right. I will give you credit for that. I'm looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Gleason. Are there any questions for staff, comments, thoughts?
Just a comment.
On the clean community fee?
Well, from what was first proposed till now, I think we've made some changes to this that made this more equitable to our, our citizens, increasing the percentage, uh, the, uh, commercial utility consumers would be, uh, charged versus the residential. And I appreciate y'all listening to council and the direction, and that we were able to find something that can work, so that we can enhance these kind of services, litter cleanup, um, beautification efforts, even, um, I, I know I don't see this specifically mentioned here, but I believe, like, some of the code enforcement also deals with, um, homeless and the homeless outreach and the, uh, cleanups at some of the homeless encampments. So, um, I'm glad we were able to work those numbers, make this a more equitable, um, increase for our citizens.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I remember when we discussed this, uh, several, I guess about a year ago or so, and we talked about this, this funding also can be used for a house that's been abandoned, and it's, uh, it's not livable. Is that still the case?
Mr. Carr?
Mayor Council, Greg Carr, Director of New York Enhancement. Yes, we have a, uh, fund set aside for demolition.
And let me ask you this. Do you come back and put a lien on that property, uh, once you demolate, demolition takes place?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then we getting that money back?
Eventually, yes.
Okay, yeah, then we just build up to the, the, I guess, the piggy bank if we're receiving some of those funds back?
It goes back into the general fund, and as we deplete that amount of money that's set aside for demolition, um, we'd have to replenish that.
Okay, we also talked about emergency situations. Uh, was that, we talked about roofs and windows, and when there's a bad storm, is that, would this still cover that as well?
Mr. Gonzalez, are you talking about housing rehab?
No, no, this was the emergency enhancement, uh, community enhancement.
I'm going to talk about the fee, but what, what are the uses that you're describing?
Yeah, can you use this for those type of uses?
It's, we don't use it for that, no. We have other programs that cover that.
Okay, yeah. But do you use it for the first one I mentioned?
Yes, for the demolition, yes.
Oh, okay, all right. Uh, let me ask you, what's the cost to, to knock down a home, average? Twenty, forty thousand?
No, it's actually thankfully lower than that, um, ten to twelve, depending on, um...
Okay.
If we can get some recyclables out of it, we like to use those kind of demolition people, so they reduce the overall cost, because they can recycle if there's metal, um, building materials and stuff. But the last few that we've done been in that ten to twelve-thousand-dollar range.
That's a fair price.
Not bad.
No, not bad at all. That's all I have. Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, Mr. Mendosa?
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Carr, do you mind, I'm just sorry to get you down there. I have a couple of questions for you here. Um, with this in community enhancement, does this, um, department also handle, uh, let's say somebody gets evicted or leaves a home, and decides to just throw everything outside their front yard? Do we do anything with that, uh, as far as community enhancement?
Well, a lot of the money is used for cleanups, um, not so much on that. We use our, um, general fund money for that, but, uh, for, as Councilmember Prather mentioned, we use a lot of the money for, um, homeless cleanups right now, and those are getting more and more costly.
When it comes to the demolition houses, like, uh, Mr. Gonzalez mentioned earlier, do you have a rough idea of how many homes we have right now that are pending demolition?
As they talked about in the CDPG process of getting their programs going, it was kind of similar. We've just worked through the legal process. If it's a, if they'll agree to demo it, we've not had a problem with that, but the forced demolitions, we've just had, um, two go through the court process, so we should be seeing that ramping up. We have a list, as everybody can drive around town, that will probably be coming up on it, but the problem was that forcing it, um, we've solved that problem. We've got one that's ready to be demoed as soon as we can let the contract out, so it's going forward.
Just in case, let's say we have some of these homes that, um, are needing to be demolished, what are the negative effects that this home could have on a neighborhood if we don't demolish it?
Well, the home we're waiting to demolish right now was, um, burnt halfway down. Um, the residents, um, which weren't the original owners, their heirs were still living there. They had drug dealers and drug issues going on. The neighbors were constantly calling because of the people coming and going. So in this case, one, it's a safety hazard, because they were still going back into this house, trying to do repairs, having generators, and so it's safety for them, also safety for the neighbors that live next to them, um, with just, uh, people that were showing up, um, we just don't need people getting hurt in these things.
Thank you. So would you say that, um, this particular program, this department, is a benefit for our first responders, our firefighters, our EMTs, and our police officers?
It's a benefit, and it's also, uh, safety for them, because if they have to go in and, if that house caught, the example I used, if it caught back on fire, there's things that could happen, uh, to them just responding to the fire, let alone anybody that was there that may have caused the fire again.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Carr. And if I could just say, um, my neighborhood itself, Real Vista, I know people make comments about how, and not everybody uses this program. Uh, I want to emphasize again that our bowl communities, um, that we call Varios, they are the ones who would benefit from this particular, uh, program. They're the ones that benefit from our alleys being cleaned up, because again, these are folks that live in these neighborhoods who are elderly most of the time, who don't have access to their alleys. This allows them, you know, to be taken care of. It allows, again, for people who invest in our city, like our taxpayers, to get something back in the return, and I do appreciate my colleagues going this step. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Anything else? Ms. Trevino, let's vote. Did you have something else, Mr. Gonzalez?
Uh, no, ma'am. I was just going to mention that I'd be voting for this due to the fact that we put more of the load on commercial buildings.
Yeah, and Ms. Reyes, are, are we still seeking a way to make this more, I'm going to say, equitable for commercial businesses?
Yes, ma'am, we're still going to continue to look at if there's a different way to, to look at the basis of the fee.
Right, that we can legally charge a difference.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Trevino, let's vote.
Mary Houston?
I'm an aye.
Ms. Garza, Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Mendosa?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
And Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Okay, so that concludes that part. So folks, we're going to go back to the, the top of the line of the public hearings. We've already done item nine, and I am going to ask y'all if you would like to have items ten, eleven, and twelve presented together and hold one public hearing, as I believe was done, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. It's three street abandonments, but they are literally intertwined. So, our, Mr. Gary, may we do that? I'm seeing yeses.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, there would be, that would be allowable if there are no objections from the commission, as long as you're still having the public hearing that allows everybody to speak on all three streets. It's not a problem.
They could speak on, it's going to be hard to talk about one and not the others anyway. Ms. Trevino, would you go ahead and read items ten, eleven, and twelve, and I'm glad you took a big sip of water before you started, so, um, thank you.
Receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifty-eight approving the abandonment of a forty-three thousand five-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot right-of-way described as paramount circle within the Champion's Business Park subdivision, and located between I thirty-five Frontage and Pulse Road, subject to replacement right-of-way being dedicated to the city, authorized the city manager or designated to execute a quick claim deed to the abutting... city manager or designated to execute a quick claim deed to the abutting property owner requesting such abandonment, subject to the owner dedicating a replacement right-of-way to the city and provide an effective date, and consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifty-eight on the first of two readings. Number eleven, receive a stat presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifty-nine approving the abandonment of a thirty-six thousand one hundred and fifty-four square foot right-of-way described as Champions Boulevard within the Champions Business Park subdivision and located between I-35 Frontage and Post Road, subject to replacement right-of-way being dedicated to the city, authorized the city manager or designated to execute a quick claim deed to the abutting property owner requesting such abandonment, subject to the owner dedicating a replacement right-of-way to the city, and declare an effective date, and consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifty-nine on the first of two readings. Number twelve, receive a stat presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against describe, I'm sorry, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixty approving the abandonment of a fifty-two thousand two hundred and seventy-two square foot right-of-way described as Premier Parkway within the Champions Business Park subdivision and located between I-35 Frontage and Post Road, subject to replacement right-of-way being dedicated to the city, authorized the city manager or designated to execute a quick claim deed to the abutting property owner requesting such abandonment, subject to the owner dedicating a replacement right-of-way to the city and declare an effective date, and consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixty on the first of two readings.
Welcome, Ms. Hernandez.
Mayor Council, Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. These abandonment requests are associated with redevelopment of the area south of Yarrington Road between Post Road and Interstate thirty-five. In summary, the applicant is proposing abandonment of three partial roadways, which totals approximately one hundred and thirty-two thousand square feet of public right-of-way. Staff is currently reviewing a preliminary plat, which includes approximately one hundred and eighty-four thousand square feet of proposed right-of-way, which would be dedicated to the city. The net gain, if this were to be approved, is about fifty-two thousand square feet. Next slide. This graphic shows the area in general, and the roads to be abandoned are hatched in red, and the proposed right-of-way is in pink. Next slide. Paramount Circle abandonment is item number ten on your agenda. This is an improved street with utilities that has been, maybe y'all know this, the, the site of illegal dumping. There's been a boat out there for a while, so this abandonment will be helpful to help the applicant get that area cleaned up so they can complete their redevelopment. Next slide. Champions Boulevard is also an improved street, and as you can see on the map, only a portion of this right-of-way is proposed for abandonment because the other portion is used by the Champions Crossing Apartments. So we're only looking at the area from Premier Parkway to I-35, which actually does not connect to I-35. Next slide. Item twelve on the agenda is the abandonment of a por, a portion of Premier Parkway, and as you can see on the map, it is from Champions, not quite to I-35. So they are maintaining that connection to I-35 that currently exists. And the upper portion of this roadway will actually be widened and connect to Yarrington Road as part of the new development. Next slide. Sam Marcus Code of Ordinances says that abandonment should be approved only if the streets are not needed for future road or utilities, and upon review of the preliminary plat, staff has determined that the existing right-of-ways are no longer necessary and that the future rights-of-way and the associated utilities are appropriate for the proposed development. City council may recall, we followed the same process for right-of-way abandonment for a small portion of a street at the southern end of the same development, which is that little piece behind Chuck Nash. So we have done this kind of swap in the past where the city's actually getting more right-of-way once the development starts going through the approval and plating process. Next slide. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this request on July twenty-fifth and unanimously recommended approval of all three items. Staff also recommends approval, which will be subject to the approval of the plat, the, you know, movement of all of those utilities because there are utilities in the way, but the applicant will be, again, replacing those utilities within their rights-of-way as they move forward with their development. And that concludes my presentation.
All right. Then I will open the public hearing on items ten, eleven, and twelve. Is there anyone in chambers, foyer, who wishes to speak on this, for this item, against the item, or about the item?
Mayor and council, my name is Paul Leventis. I live at twenty-five fifty-four Emerald Ridge in College Station, Texas, and I'm here in favor of this abandonment, and I'm here for any questions or anything you want to get into.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this that's in chambers or the foyer? If not, Ms. Trevino, is Ms. Capoletta online? All right.
Hey, y'all. Good evening. My name is Professor Lisa Marie Capoletta. I live at thirteen twenty-two Belvin, and the community calls me LMC. And I'm not hearing, and I'm try, I'm trying to understand how this works. I recall for many years when Shannon, who interestingly is now the consultant for a company that wants to bring another development to our community, which is a real, which calls into question her integrity of anything she's ever done in the past. And it also calls into question the exit paperwork of, of yours, of your city staff, and your city manager was once an HR manager. So I'm very confused why Shannon was not forced to find a piece of pa, sign a piece of paperwork that she would not do anything against our community within a period of two years. That's, that's reasonable. But to some people, money is all that matters. But back to the issue at hand, I'm noticing a reference to Chuck Nash, and so I'm trying to understand, because in the past, when Shannon, who I believe is corrupt, and that's, I allege she's corrupt, that's my opinion, and I'm entitled to it because of, by virtue of her being involved in this development coming up, not this specific development tonight, but another one that's about to hit near my neighbor, I just want to clarify. There you, and this is, this is on Amanda. There used to be a sheet that gave us a brief, an executive summary of what happened at the P and Z when this was at a vote, and I don't see that in these attachments. And I take issue with you guys splitting this up, unless it's one PowerPoint. She should have had a Plan A. I've got all these different PowerPoints, or Plan B, they're all together, and, and I don't see that cover sheet. So I'm not sure how an engaged public, are they supposed to like stop in the middle of the meeting and find that old P and Z and, and where the minutes? I mean, it's very difficult. It should be in the packet. Now, if this is indeed by Chuck Nash, because I'm super confused because I don't have that, you know, in front of me, and there's references to, if this is in the area of Chuck Nash, there are artifacts over there. There's a TCEQ site for tetrahydrochloroethylene, tetrahydrochloroethylene, say that one fast. And, and I don't hear that analysis from Amanda if indeed this is in proximity, in close proximity to Chuck Nash. If it's that close to Chuck Nash, there's a Plurk Plume in that whole area, just like there is all downtown, which city staff just don't like to talk about. So I guess in the future, I would kindly ask Amanda to have that information from the P and Z for if anybody decides to get their keister up to City Hall besides me or on Zoom and talk about it. But also, I would like some conversation about Perk. Based upon tonight, I doubt any of you will ask that question, and it's disappointing because I remember a time when a lot of us rallied for you guys to get elected because we were tired of the, the Ryan Thomason crew, and you've become worse. But once again, that's your choice. You're, you have free will a, as a human being. Thank you for your time, and God bless Sam Marcus.
And I will close the public hearing. And now, Mr. Gary, I believe we do need to have three separate votes on this, correct?
The, the way it's been consolidated, you can, it, you can make a motion for all three, but if there's an objection to one, of course.
Okay.
There'd be an amendment to the motion, but it could go either way.
Okay.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve items ten, eleven, and twelve.
Okay, I have motion from Mr. Gleason and seconded by Mr. Prather, by Mr. Scott, for all three, ten, eleven, and twelve. Questions, concerns, comments? I'm, I'm good. If this is their land and they want to reconfigure, it's okay by me. Regarding artifacts, at what point does that enter into any conversation with the city? Ms. Hernandez?
Sure. So there are a variety of permits that will be associated with the development, some through TCEQ, some through the city. So if there are artifacts in the area, it, it seems like Lisa Marie Capoletta may be talking about the area farther south near Chuck Nash. For these three items, we're talking about that hard corner of Yarrington and I-35.
Right up near the Champions Apartments and stuff?
Yes, ma'am. Surrounding the Champions Apartments, actually.
Okay. But if it, but there is a process by which that will be considered?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. So, anything else? Let us vote now, and we'll give it a try for ten, eleven, and twelve, as was the motion.
Okay, I want to start with, well, Ms. Garza, Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
And Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Okay. Ms. Trevino, this concludes all of our public hearings, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that means we need to go back to item six, if you will read that one, and then I've got an amendment for that.
Okay. Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash one forty-two R approving a re, release of easement and quick claim deed of city property under the terms of an easement exchange agreement with JMC Realty LP, a Texas limited partnership authorized city manager or designated to execute documents pursuant to this agreement on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Okay, uh, looking, I'll make a motion for approval, looking for a second. Seconded by Mr. Scott. Counsel, when I read this, I started out looking, well, where is this? I finally found it on a map, but if anybody's searching for this in the future, there, it might be difficult. Therefore, I'm gonna make a motion to after where it says, after where it says, "Quick claim deed of city property," to insert the words, "located southwest of Posey Road between IH thirty-five and Spiny Lizard Lane." And that's my motion to amend, and I will appreciate a second. All right, I heard Mr. Gonzalez first, so I will give him the second. And any conversation about this one? This was just for the location. Okay. Ms. Trevino, let's vote.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
And Ms. Garza. Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
All right. Thank you very much. And now I believe we are on item nineteen. Am I correct?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
All right, item nineteen.
Mayor, just, was there, I thought there was a second on a main, on a, on a amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was an amendment, and we didn't.
So down to the main motion.
We need to vote on the main motion. You are correct. Thank you. Um, we need to vote on the main motion.
Yes. Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza, and Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes six to zero.
That's because I didn't make a, I didn't write amend on my page here. Okay. Thank you for keeping us legal as always, Mr. Gary. And now we're on to item nineteen.
Consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixty-seven on the first of two readings, reappointing Daniel Matthew Burns as an Associate Municipal Court Judge for the San Marcos Municipal Court of Record for a term of two years and provide an effective date.
Most to approve.
Motion from Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Prather. Conversation, let's vote.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza, and Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
All right, on to item twenty.
Consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixty-eight on the first of two readings, authorizing installation of speed cushions in both directions in the two hundred through four hundred blocks of Porch Sohower Drive from approximately six hundred and seventy feet west of Old Bassrup Highway to Duchesson Drive, including procedural provisions and provide an effective date.
Most to approve.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Scott. I'll give Mr. Gleason that second. Commentary, let's vote.
Okay. Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza, Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
And Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
All right, item twenty-one.
Consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixty-nine on the first and final reading, admitting ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifty-three ordering a general election to be held on November seven, twenty twenty-three for the purpose of electing a city council member for place three and a city council member for place four by establishing early voting and election day polling places for this election, making provisions for conducting the election, providing for the approval of this ordinance as an emergency measure on only one reading and provide an effective date.
Most to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Gleason. Any questions? One of the things that we have discussed extensively in the past on these is polling locations. I looked at the list. It's pretty, it actually had more polling places than I thought there would be in an odd-numbered-year election. Ms. Trevino has provided you a list of those. That does include Texas State for early and election day voting. And with that, I will ask Ms. Trevino to call the roll.
Well, I have one comment on this, as far as locations go. The only thing I still am hoping that at some point in time we can find another polling location on the north side of town. I, when you draw a map of the city, the southeast side, the central part is pretty well covered. When we lost Crockett, and is Brookdale?
Yes.
Brookdale North is on there. Never mind. Forget my comment.
Yeah, one time I was gonna have to go either Government Center or all the way out to the South Hayes.
I think it was during COVID that we lost that Brookdale, and I'm glad to see it back on there for the residents on the north end. Thank you.
Yep, I was glad to see it, too.
Mayor, we can still vote, but you choose to vote.
They are voting centers, and I'm kind of surprised these are called polling places. I guess they still are, but yes, you can vote at any one of the approved locations any day, even election day. Yeah, if you're driving in from Austin, you can vote and view it if you want to.
I'm not going.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza, Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
And Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
On to item twenty-two.
Consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seventy on the first of two readings, admitting section six point zero three zero of the San Marcos City Code to eliminate the five-day holding period exception for impounded stray cats having no traceable identification, including procedural provisions, and declare an effective date.
Most to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion for Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Mendoza. Questions, thoughts? If not, we'll vote.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza, Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
And Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
On to item twenty-three.
Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash one forty-five R approving a one-year state-use contract with Easter Seal Central Texas certified through WorkQuest, a state purchasing cooperative for vegetation, litter control, and landscape maintenance in the estimated amount of one million two hundred and sixty-one thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars and three cents authorized city manager or designated to execute this agreement on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Most to approve.
Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Mendoza. Questions, thoughts, concerns? Let's vote.
Actually, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My apologies. Little button. Um, thank you, Mayor. I, I know for, for our citizens here that one point two does seem like a stiff price, and I agree. But again, I just want to notate that this helps our bowl communities, and this does help not only with our city to look nice and clean, but it also, unfortunately, we now have a lot more homeless camps, I'm sorry, unhoused camps that are around the city that this helps with. So I think it is unnecessary cost that we have to in order to get reins on what's going on. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. And I think it's a bit less than it was last year, so. Anyway, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, let's vote.
Okay. Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza, Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
And Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Roll it on to item twenty-four.
Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash one forty-six R awarding in a definite delivery, indefinite quantity contract with air gun, asphalt, emulsions, ink, Colorado materials, LTD, and Texas materials for the provision of road building materials on an as-needed base for use by the Public Works, sorry, Department in the estimated annual amount of three million dollars, with the option to extend, I apologize, for up to four one-year periods for a total contract term not to exceed five years and a total cumulative contract amount of fifteen million, authorizing the city manager or designated to execute the contract on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Most to approve.
Motion for Mr. Scott, seconded by.
Second.
Mr. Gleason. Questions?
Yes, ma'am. I have a question. Thank you, Mayor. Um, and this is just kind of, when we say as-needed, when would we need us to tap into this? Uh, when, when would you have the ability, if we say it's as-needed basis, when would you use that as-needed?
Sorry, I saw you as director of public works. So this is an indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity contract. So it would be as-needed as you indicated for repaving roads for, and the title is a little bit of a misnomer. It's not just for roads. It's also for, it's also a contract for rock, asphalt, emulsion, that not only the Public[1796.31] that not only the Public Works Department can use, but also water and wastewater, as well as parks. So this is a contract that all the departments can use, use for all of their operation activities, as well as emergencies.
Thank you for the clarification. It definitely allows it to be more expanded and a better understanding. Thank you, sir.
And, yeah, and it says road building materials. But basically, this is finding the, what we would consider the best qualified. It's kind of like keeping them on retainer so that you're not having to go do a contract every time you need a project that extends, trying to get that project done.
And every time we do, that is more money. We go for each contract. This way, it's a way of saving us money from the retainer.
I hope it's saving us money, but it's saving us a heck of a lot of time.
Sounds good to me.
And money in staff time for having to do each one of those proposals and all that other stuff. Am I right in that? This is being more efficient with city resources.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
I have one question. On the deliverable side, that includes our own transportation needs as needed from the city's own trucks?
I'm sorry?
Is this, is this involve also, it says deliverables.
Road building materials.
Indefinite deliverables. Does this include transportation costs coming from those? Or does this include the use of our own equipment to go retrieve those?
It can be both. The city can use its own equipment to pick up the material, or it has the option of using the vendor's trucks and delivery.
Okay. I used to work at Colorado Materials, so that's the reason I'm kind of in-depth about this. But I'm glad to see some local companies on here. And I hope that most of it comes from Colorado, being Johnny, Mr. Wiseman does so much for the community. But I was just curious about the deliverable side of things, if it was needed, or if we do have the option to do it ourselves.
Yes, it's for both.
All righty. Ms. Trevino.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
And Ms. Garza. Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
25.
Consider approval of Resolution 2023-147R approving a public transit system in a local agreement with capital, area, rural transportation system carts for carts to provide public transit service and maintenance in the San Marcos urbanized area with funding to carts in the amount of $2,268,000, for which $515,399 is to be paid by the city and the balance to be paid from federal and state sources authorized city manager or designated to execute the agreement on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Most to approve.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Prather. Questions, thoughts?
I just have a question. Would this, this carts program, it is one of the programs that is also involved with our inter-contract with Texas State?
So this is just for the city portion of the public transportation? It's not necessarily for the Texas State one? But the transit program as a whole is working on that partnership with Texas State?
And this would be included in that, at the end of the agreement, right? This carts program will be included into it?
Eventually, well, the carts program that we're considering right now is just for the city portion of it. They have a separate contract with a different contractor.
Question, Mayor.
Yes.
On the carts, it's how utilized? And when I say that, I know it's utilized. But I hear different, from different ideas from people occasionally thinking that an Uber system would be more cost-effective for the city. Has that ever been compared to like carts' cost? I mean, I can see if you have Uber, you're creating jobs for people, you know? But as a cost-wise?
These buses have drivers. These buses have drivers.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am, they do.
Today. Today.
So it's a little bit of a different transportation model. So that's more of like an on-demand type transportation. This is more of a fixed route. We do have an on-demand option. To give you an example, we are probably going to move around 90,000 people this year across all of our modes of transportation. So that just kind of gives you an example of how many people are moving and just across the whole city, rather than a point-to-point, like an Uber.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Ms. Trevino, let's vote. Thank you, Ms. Cocktail.
Aye.
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 Ms. Garza, and Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes six to zero with one absent.
All righty, item 26.
Consider approval by motion authorizing negotiations of a development agreement with Rayman Terrain on behalf of whole Texas LTD for approximately 132.892 acres out of the Samuel Craft Senior Survey Abstract Numbers 89 and 98, purely located 3,500 feet east of the York Creek Road and South Old Bastrop Highway intersection along the north side of South Old Bastrop Highway, and consider the appointment of a council committee to review the development agreement if desired.
Most to approve.
Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Mendoza. Did your motion include creation of a council committee?
I did not. I think we could make a decision without that.
Well, not if you read this thing. Oh, my gosh.
It's a lot.
Okay, so your motion is just to authorize the negotiations?
Yes.
Okay.
That was my motion. You can amend it if you want.
Okay, well, no, well, let's do that first. And then, Mr. Garrett, can we just do a second motion regarding a council committee on this topic? We can, okay. All right. So this is just authorizing negotiations of a development agreement. Do y'all have questions? And the reason this would be a development agreement is because it is not contiguous to the city?
The development agreement, because it's not within city limits. It's in our ETJ.
That's, well, that's what I mean, is it's not even eligible for annexation at this point in time, correct? Because it's not contiguous?
Correct. There will likely be provisions for annexation, which would include talking through with the applicant how they become contiguous.
Right. Okay. Let's vote on the authorizing negotiations of a development agreement first.
Okay, Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza, Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
And Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Okay. And after reading all of this last night, and clearly, I read this thinking this was in front of us for approval, not realizing that this was their offer? Is that a way to put this? This was their offer? And you can't blame a guy for trying. So anyway, this is really, there's a lot to it. So I'm going to say that we need a council committee, and I will volunteer to be on said committee. And I'm awaiting response from the rest of you.
I'll second that, and I'll volunteer also.
You will volunteer, okay.
Is it a little more, or are we capped on this?
We cap, we don't have to have three, but we cap at three.
I would like to know that it is possible.
Okay. Are there other volunteers? If not, then I will, I will make a motion that we have a committee and that the committee be comprised of myself, Mayor Pro-Tam Gleason, and Mr. Mendoza. I'm looking for a second. Mr. Scott has seconded that. We'll vote on the second amendment. I'm sorry, the second motion.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Ms. Garza, and Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
And Mr. Prather.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
All right, on to item 27.
Hold discussion regarding the Historic Preservation Commission Recommendation Resolution 2023-01RR-APC, amending Appendix Historic District Design Guidelines of the San Marcos Design Manual to provide specific design standards for maintaining the capability of historic residential site elements, such as, but not limited, walkways, sidewalks, and topography, and provide direction to the city manager.
Most to approve.
Is this a?
Oh, yeah, hold on, hold on.
It's a discussion. And perhaps we could get a couple of sentences of Ms. Hernandez regarding what this is about? Because I passed it through from HPC to put it on our agenda. I am not versed in the details of this.